Arnold, here Andrew Franklin.
Here.
Ben Lynn.
Here.
Danielle Bailey is present and Carla Pennington Cross is excused, may join us later. And just send a message along to explain why she's absent tonight. She said, I'm sorry, I can't be in attendance in person tonight as I know how important the work we're doing right now is. My husband had a bad ski accident last Friday and has been in the hospital in Los Angeles since then. We expect a full recovery, but it'll be slow. Tonight I needed to stay with him later than anticipated. I will try to join the meeting through my phone when I begin the long drive. So. She is sending her thoughts and well wishes and she's excused. Um, you may stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, moving on to agenda approval. Does anybody object to a three agenda? Okay, uh, by unanimous consent, the agenda is approved. I'm gonna move on to public comments. Uh, so at this time, we could take any comments uh that would be on a non-agenda item. Anybody like to make any comments on a non-agenda item at this time? Okay, please come on up, state your name and I got it. Or if the lead.
Hello, my name is Kelly Sire. Sorry, my name is still Kelly Sire. Um, I am a resident, my address is seven zero zero one North Bravon. Um, I'm also the parent of two Glen Hills students and I'm a teacher in a neighboring district and I'm a member of the equity committee for this board. Um, it recently came to my attention while we were examining the equity lens and in what ways we could use the equity lens to meet the needs of the young people in our business. That there is somehow a rule, and I'm not sure if it's a board policy or I don't know where it came from, but that says that teachers may not ask the parents from their classrooms for materials, like consumable materials, tissues, pencils, folders, snacks, and water bottles. And that teachers have been buying all of these things out of their pocket since they have known about the rule, which is at least two years. I find this concerning. Um, so first of all, I should have started with, um, I think becoming a board member is like becoming a spouse or a parent. You can consent to it, but it can never be informed consent because you never know all of what you're gonna get until you do it. So I'm pretty sure y'all are dealing with stuff that is not what you thought you were running for. And thank you for dealing with all of that anyway. Um, I'm hoping that this can be a small thing that gets solved in the middle of bigger things that can't be solved. And I think that having this mutual aid between community members and teachers is really important. We rely on our teachers in all kinds of ways that can provide support, at least let me speak to myself, that they can provide support to my kids that I can't um provide in the same way. And knowing all the stress that all of y'all are under and therefore all the stress all the teachers are under, it seems incredibly unreasonable to allow there to be a rule in which they undergo financial stress on top of worrying about their job security and on top of everything else. At my local district, we did a survey of all of our staff and found out that sixty percent worked at least one other job and thirteen percent are food insecure. I would not be surprised if there were really similar statistics here and that's not who I want buying snacks for my kid. Um, so please help us fix that rule so that teachers can ask all of us for what we need so that they will need snacks and water bottles and tissues and pencil.
Thank you very much.
I'm curious, um, I'm curious Allison, do you know about this rule?
I don't. And although we approved the policy, I know that we approved the policy around crowd funding, but that's very different than what she's talking about. So I'd have to look into it. Cause I thought some people didn't need stamps and tissues.
Okay, it sounds like an interesting thing to look into. And if it's not a rule or a policy, then that's a simple communication out to teacher, staff, and community. Um, I think the program or is it called Donors Choose or like Amazon, like would I, I'd be like an Amazon wishlist kind of thing, right? Um, so if there are no barriers to that, then we should definitely communicate that out. My suggestion.
Well, usually it's something where like I would put in my syllabus, you know, you can bring some tissues, so it doesn't even have to be Amazon. So I've never heard of this rule.
I haven't either. And I've gotten, I've gotten asks from some teachers, but not all. So some teachers are operating under the uh understanding they cannot, that that's like, we just need to revenue them.
I just wanna, and that's great. I just wanna add then, uh, I am concerned about the suggestion. I'm concerned about the suggestion that teachers might feel that doing so, that there might be some sense for attribution allowed to that. Uh, and so I, I just hope to spell that right now and figure this out that uh I am completely unaware based on this, some other communication that you had that there'd be any issues or that teacher would be asking for anything inappropriate. So from my position, I, I, I don't see why there would be any kind of retribution. That doesn't mean that teachers sometimes we don't uh fear uh if they do something that isn't expressly approved, that there might be unintended consequence for it. But I guess being only in my own capacity as a board member, I sure as heck would not endorse uh that position.
Um, can we communicate out about this at the March sixth Cal? Okay, so we'll have an update. Um, anyone else like to make a public comment at this time? On a non-agenda item? Uh, we will move on to approval of minutes. Uh, no, consent agenda. Consent agenda contains several minutes for the month of January, uh, January third, January ninth, January fifteenth, January seventeenth, January nineteenth, January twenty second, January twenty fourth, and January twenty ninth, uh, regular and special meeting at Cal minutes. Um, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Okay. I need to pull one of the meeting minutes from the consent agenda. I apologize. Um. It's January twenty ninth, I believe. Okay. And I already let you know. Not in four times, right?
It is a one plus twenty-four hours.
Okay, she knows about it.
Okay.
Yep, so I would just, we just wanted to uh move to correct the January twenty ninth minutes to reflect the actual number of open enrollment seats that were currently, which now says some recommended number that's different from what was on the agenda. Uh, would anybody object to just adding those minutes revised to show the actual numbers?
No.
Okay, so let's move to vote on those. Is, is there a motion to approve the January twenty ninth special meeting minutes with the revision of adding the specific number of open enrollment seats?
So moved.
There is a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, voice vote aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? Okay, and prior to that, there was a motion to approve the consent agenda at second, right? All in favor, voice vote?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, consent agenda is approved. Thank you. All right, moving on to the district spotlight. So thank you to those who joined us for our spotlight. We have representatives, representatives from both buildings, from Glen Hilton Parkway here to talk about guiding coalition work that's been going on in the buildings as well as to highlight um some of the ways that staff and students are honoring Black History Month.
Have to sit at the table or try to do it from here?
Um, if you could sit at the table and then speak in the microphone, that's awesome. That's good. Thank you very much. Yeah, um.
All right, well, I'm excited to uh share some celebrations that we have. I could probably share with you a hundred and fifty celebrations that just happened today. So, you know, with a lot that happens at Parkway that's phenomenal, but we are focusing on our PLC work in particular, our guiding coalition, our professional learning teams, along with our Black History Month programs that we've been doing. So uh, the first slide is simply a kind of like a highlight timeline and background. Um, the second, third, and fourth kind of highlight up there are some of the real focal points of our guiding coalition and our PLT teams this year. We identified essential standards, we're unpacking them, and then we're utilizing those within our unit internalization. So. Yeah.
What is a guiding coalition?
Yeah, I'm gonna get there.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, it's a great question.
Okay, all right, just a second.
Yeah, so the next one is really our timeline. Uh, this, well, this one is our core essential questions. It's what we operate out of uh from a PLC. Uh, what do we expect students to learn? How will we know they've learned it? What will we do if they haven't learned it? And what will we do if they've already learned, uh, if they already know it? We'll get to these four essential questions and what we do with them throughout the time. But this is kind of our, our, where we, our timeline of where we have been since uh last June. It actually goes even further back in last April, we went to a professional learning community uh conference in Great Bag. And we had members from our community or from Parkway go with us and uh we determined that that was something that we wanted to try and attempt. Um. We really appreciated the, the equity lens around equity, the educational equity. We thought this was a great way to ensure that that was happening here at Parkway. Um, and one of those things is creating a guiding coalition. That guiding coalition is kind of like a leadership team within our building uh that really leads the charge uh of, of what we are doing, make change that way. So we have ten members in our school um that have, you know, volunteered and uh spent time with me and extra time with me, um, talking about anything from uh essential learning targets to schedules to mission and vision statements and everything that we do. And they kind of uh kind of get their toes wet and into it to start with before we need it in with staff. And so our guiding coalition has been phenomenal. Um, and they've really kind of led this work that you'll see kind of going throughout the year. And so in September, uh, we came back from summer. Uh, we created weekly, what we call professional learning team meetings that happen every Wednesday. Um. And in September, we really focused around creating a collaboration, a culture of collaboration, um, which really focused on team norms within our groups. And so we spent a lot of time talking about the importance of team norms, uh, how they keep us grounded, especially when making change, uh, kind of like in conversations we are from teaching to learning, uh, which is a big change and a lot of conversations around what I do in a classroom, right? And it's a solo act a lot of the time, and we're trying to change that to what we do and to a collaborative message. And so uh, team norms was essential for us in September. And then in October, uh, we did our first day to dive around uh essential standards and we did some really important work around identifying what essential standards are. Um, we looked at our priority standards that our district uses and what you see on our report cards and really focused it on two to three uh essential standards that we could really guarantee. And that was around our district goal of a hundred percent of our students proficient uh in our essential standards. So we picked two or three of those that we really thought were important. Um, and then we worked our way through that. And then in November, we, uh, the guiding coalition actually right kind of the same time the strategic planning happened, uh, created our Parkway mission, vision, and collective commitments. Um, and then we had the opportunity to share that with our staff, get feedback, uh, actually look at what we did with strategic planning as a district. We kind of aligned that as well. Anything you see up here that's underlined is a link if you really want to dive into the board and get nerdy with me. Uh, requested, I'm gonna see, I promise. Um, and so that's what we did in November. In December then, um, after we identified the essential standards, we really dove deep into those essential standards and unpacked them. And so, uh, we looked at everything from vocabulary that is important to creating, uh, probably the most important part of that is student-friendly learning targets from those essential standards. With staff dove deep and that was long work that took a lot of effort and um collaboration and they did an amazing job with that. We've almost gotten all of our essential standards unpacked. We're still working on that. And then in January, um, we continued that dive into unpacking the essential standards and we actually uh did another day to dive in the winter around the essential standards when it came to star testing. Uh, and then another thing that our guiding coalition and our school did that was really cool, and we actually started our very first tier three SEL groups. So uh, based on some savers data that came back from staff, we identified students and certain skills that were important for them to work on with our SEL uh group and those teachers, see students anywhere from one or twice, sometimes even three times a week working on uh an SEL skill. And then in this month, actually today, was our very first uh dive into unit internalizations. And that's really looking at a particular group unit in math uh or ELA right now. And then diving deep into those essential standards, when do you see those essential, essential standards being taught? Um, and really asking those four essential questions that we kind of started the, the, today with. Uh, in March and April, we're gonna continue, the guiding coalition is really focusing around schedule, uh, and guiding coalition has really prioritized the time um of when after reading and math in particular, right now we switch every two weeks, it goes from uh literacy to math intervention time. And so you sometimes will have two and even more if you have a longer break in there of time where you don't have uh tier three intervention or tier two intervention happening with students. And so really prioritizing that time after ELA blocks and math blocks for next year. And then in May and June, um, we'll do a full year day to dive into our essential standards and look at the progress made from September till then. Uh, along as well as reviewing our essential standards and making sure that's, those essential standards are the right ones that we chose and uh changing anything that we think might need to be changed.
Everybody should have a slideshow to make.
The second part of our celebration is our work in our Black History Month. And so uh every year, classroom teachers uh will dive deep and get creative uh around African-Americans that made positive contributions to our society. And so you'll see um a click through a sideshow of some of those examples that have happened. Um, and this year's theme is standing to many impacts Black Americans have had on the visual arts, music, culture, movements, and more. And so uh when you click through those slides, you'll see that theme highlighted throughout. Uh, one of the really cool ways that we've given our students voice uh around Black History Month this year was through our morning announcements. And so every day we have our amazing third graders come down and they do a little share of somebody. Um, and you see that calendar that is attached there as well. Um, and then our teachers also have access to the calendar and they get more resources to teach into their classrooms during that time.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
Hold on, I'm just, anyone, I don't.
Well, with presence at two and three, oh, we know that they've learned it. Oh, we do, uh, they haven't learned it. I think, uh, Dylan William talks about this in his book, uh, Better Formative Assessment. I think, uh, I mean, that, that could be something to look at with two and three.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great point. And that's something we, we keep talking about, creating especially non-curating common form assessments, right? Some, most of our curriculum have assessments currently, but really diving into those assessments and figuring out, are they hitting the essential standards? Do we have enough data around that? But then also, how do we create common form assessments that maybe that curriculum has not provided?
Well, I think, uh, and Dylan William, he, I think he defined, again, I've I've been misquoting him, but I think he, I haven't read it, but he defines format assessment as, you know, so you get the data, but if you don't do something with the data, that it's not actually a format assessment. So I mean, that'd be something that's, you know, easy, it's many whiteboards and things like that. So it doesn't even have to be kind of a common format assessments. They're also, yeah, I mean, that's good too.
Yeah, yeah.
But anyway, so that Dylan William won, won out. It's weird.
Dylan William won out.
Yeah.
All right.
Um, anyone else? How's the feedback been from the staff in regards to the changes? Cause it is a change, right? It is a shift. So how are staff feeling about the new actions and the new?
Yeah, we're asking a lot, right? Meeting once a week for sixteen minutes is a lot. Um, and I think there are weeks when the guiding coalition or when our PLTs meet that are a lot more productive than other weeks and depending, and that happens, right? Um, we haven't, we haven't been able to dive into the four questions into like the units that we, we really wanted to quite yet. It's been a lot of uh baseline work, right? Creating a collaborative culture that it takes in order to have those conversations, to get really vulnerable about what data might show you and how you collaborate around that. And so it's been a really slow movement into that, but that was intentional. Um, and so we're finally kind of jumping into that. I think with that work of unit internalizations, we'll see what that looks like within our classrooms and have a really positive impact. Um, and staff have been patient and uh they work incredibly hard in those sixty minutes with me and the coaches and um, I know we're asking a lot, but I think everybody knows that that's what's best for students and so they carry on. Yeah.
Right, you said sixty or sixty?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Yeah.
And it's PLT not PLC.
So professional learning communities is what we have here is within our district and then there are professional learning teams that happen within our grade levels. And so like second grade will have a special learning team within our professional learning community.
Uh, my question was just around the ten, you said you had ten members volunteer. Was it, did you accept everyone who volunteered? Did you get more than ten, the ten were selected or?
Yeah, so there was, there, there were more than ten, not many, um, but there was like a Google form we had to fill out, um, kind of a, a why you wanted to be a part of the guiding coalition. We tried to diversify throughout our staff and try to get as many from each grade level. Um, like we, we have, Peggy Rodriguez is in there from our, our special insight plans. We have a K five teacher, a first grade teacher. We don't have a second grade representative. We have a third grade representative, a couple of coaches. So we tried to diversify as much as we could within those applications.
So some people weren't selected.
I wanna say like me, Amy's back there, I hear you, Amy's on it, do it now at arts. I know that laugh. Um. I, there were many more. Like I wanna say there were maybe twelve or thirteen total applications.
Oh, so you just didn't want like redundancy from grade or something?
Yeah.
And it's pretty, it's a diverse group in terms of like grade, experience, you know, race, gender, et cetera.
I think so, and as much as we can be at work, like, yeah.
Yeah. Um, that's my other question. You said, so Parkway has its own mission, vision, and commitments. Does, I can ask Glen Hills, does Glen Hills have the same thing?
I don't know if they have gone through that process. It was just some of the things that our guiding coalition thought was important.
How does that work with our district, like mission, vision, and commitments? How do they?
We were not quite sure that, we didn't know you were doing that. And so we did that work and we started that work just beforehand. Um, but as you were going through that strategic planning, then we looked at what you had here strategic planning. Naturally, a lot of it aligns.
Okay.
And it should. Um, and then that's some of the feedback we got from staff, we presented it with staff, was how does it align with the district?
Yeah.
And so that, we just naturally looked at that, thought it aligned pretty well.
Do you see it as like necessary to have, for Parkway to have its own mission, vision, and commitments when you have the district?
It might not be. And to be honest with you, the, the work we did around our mission, vision, we haven't come back to that yet since we created it and finalized it. It's not something we've talked about since then. Um, it really just happened like maybe end of November, beginning of December.
Just right.
Exactly.
So and I would, I think it might be a good discussion as we move strategic planning more into the schoolhouses to think about it.
Sure.
To things like plots.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you for it. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, so I'm Michelle Credit. I'm a band coach and interventionist at Glen Hills.
I'm Cheryl Miracle, I'm the M teacher at Glen Hills. We're gonna share, um, you know, where we are at as a middle school. We have so many commonalities with Mark, what Parkway is doing. Um, as we get to um the next slide where it shows the months, we're gonna share just basically some things that may be a little bit different. We too have the four guiding questions. We, um, also in June of last year and much earlier is the other staff members attended the training in the spring. Um, built together, we have twelve members that are representing the diverse areas of our building as well. Um, different grade levels, different subject areas, different roles within the building, and came together for the first time in June.
So we have weekly PLC meetings just as Parkway does. Um, ours are structured a little bit differently. Um, man, yeah, ours are in that morning time, so we meet from seven thirty to eight o'clock. Um, kids come at eight fifteen, so we try to finish them by eight o'clock. Teachers have a chance to be focused themselves when the kids come through the door. Um, and I'm the band coaches would meet with the band teachers. So I meet with fourth grade and Tuesday with fifteen, you know, one C, this is five. We took the middle school teachers on different days. ELA coaches are doing the same thing. Our science and our social studies, um, do not yet have those standards. And so they need one, one of those teams meets with this. Yeah, yeah, one of them meets with Mr. Williams and we help do that same work together. The music department, um, meets weekly to go over, um.
Uh, right now for, um, all subjects at young math and ELA, we are not currently at a point where we have, um, for those essential standards. So I know for other areas, we've been working to make sure that we have our scope and sequence up to date and we're gonna be getting ready to identify those essential standards. So much like happened at Parkway, we really spent the month of September building trust with each other as a staff by developing norms. Um, by working together, I know for ELA and math with the essential standards, dressing those head on. And for the rest of us, just discussing that concept of collective efficacy. Instead of I in my classroom, we as a department or we as a school. And changing that shift of focus definitely takes some time and takes some trust within staff. Um, the other challenge that we faced is to move from what we are doing as teachers and trying to focus on what students are doing as learners. So those two things together really, um, took that month of September. And the goal ultimately is to end up with every subject area having essential standards, having every subject area being able to move forward with common assessments, whether they be formative or um submissive assessments. So October, um, we really dove in with the staff about the why. And I know the question for um Ryan discussing, you know, how are the staff reacting, that one thing we've heard over and over, we need to go slow to go fast. If everybody can truly understand the why about what we're doing and how we're spending our time, our teams are gonna be a lot more successful. So we talked about change around data, um, not just specifically one set of data, but over time, what that looks like and how we can leverage that to the best advantage for our students. Um, and knowing that middle school is a time of change for students, not just educationally, but a lot of emotional and just physical changes that they encounter. Um, we have spent, um, some extra time talking about learner behaviors and different things that we see within the students themselves to help empower them to become much more independent, become much more self-motivated, and for them to be able to monitor their own learning.
So then in November, um, just as ELA has been doing their work around portrait of a graduate, and Glen Hills, we've been looking at portrait of a learner. And what are those qualities that we really want our students to have to best prepare them for high school? And so we started planning some work around that activities that we would do as teachers, um, to decide what those qualities were and work with the students as to what those qualities might be and then how to, um, kind of check where they're at and foster that growth. So we did planning activities in.
And the guiding coalition has taken an active role in our staff meetings. We typically hold those on Monday mornings. As a staff, where we come together from that seven thirty to a little bit after eight o'clock time. Uh, we developed the portrait of a learner and the four words that really rose to the top for us were to persevere, communicate effectively, think critically, and empathize. So this is work that's tied in throughout, you know, our work as a staff, but even more within our classrooms through our SEL lessons and truly just in every conversation we work to have with our students to help them try to become more and more, you know, in line with what we envision for them, um, to be a successful learner.
So in, um, sorry, in January, we were looking at student survey results. We had one of our goals, we have two goals for the year. I, I know the fact we're talking about ambition, we don't have ambition, but we have goals for the year. Um, one of the goals is that, um, a hundred percent of students will show proficiency or above on the essential standards for literacy and math. Then the goal is a hundred percent of staff and students will share the belief that our collective actions positively impacts student incomes. And so kind of going along with that is that, um, respect survey that students took as to whether they feel respected in the classrooms by their peers, by their teachers. And then looking at that data, we had that data available to look at who is feeling that respect, who is feeling maybe feels that they're not getting the respect that they need and want to be too. Want to be noticed in them. And then we get the data that then what my next step is to address.
As we're moving through February, typically this is a challenging time of year for many. You know, many of us are, are feeling that, that weight of of education and for our students, that weight of, you know, the darkness outside. So really working to help them manage through that, we held, um, some activities around random acts of kindness, what it looks like to be kind and purposeful acts of respect. So two challenges that are going. So two challenges that are going on this month throughout the school, we held assemblies for each grade level. Where they were able to meet together and had conversations about those purposeful kind of acts that we are hoping. To see within our students and, um, some good tug of war came out of it, pretty interesting and the team that had, um. You know, some, some stronger girls seemed to really pull through, I know in the session that I was in, um, I attended the one for sixth grade. And it was pretty, I think, exciting for to us to see our peers or see students and their peers come together. In positive ways, have positive conversations and try to be as proactive as possible as staff. So coming up. Coming up.
So I mentioned April, um, we started to look at a draft schedule of what, um, classes and teachers. Would look like throughout the day, um, looking to prioritize time for, um, cross curricular, um. Collaboration as well as vertical collaboration and so, um. This, this year we were looking at making sure that people could collaborate with like teachers at their grade level. And next year we're looking to expand that a little bit in other directions.
And as we look towards the end of this year, um, the plan is to really reevaluate the essential standards for ELA and math. See if that work was productive and allowed for gains for our students. And continue the work of establishing essential standards in all areas. So we will definitely be updating you as time goes on, but that is essentially our year in an overview. Um, as we look at our next two slides, we'd like to share a little bit about what's gonna be coming up for. The Black His- History Month Spirit Weeks as well as the Black History Month Program.
So spirit days are listed there, um, it's pretty interesting day, dressed as a famous black icon, it inspires you, um, sorry. Uh, Tuesday, represent HBCU or fraternity sororities by wearing their colors of the year. Wednesday, blackout tape wear, Thursday, I have a dream day, dressed as your future dream.
So a way to really physically and visually, um, allow our students to be able to celebrate their individuality. Um, on Thursday of that week, on Leap Day, we will be holding an all school. Um, presentation of program in the evening, it's gonna begin at six PM. Each grade level has been tasked with assembling their own creative take on how they can truly celebrate. Um, excellence within, um, our black community here, but definitely throughout. History and throughout our community and beyond and I know the social studies in sixth grade, for instance. Um, came together, brainstormed with students, this is tremendously student led, um, and came up with. Um, part of the project, I know listening to one of our seventh grade staff just in the hallway. Talking about how they have students that are gonna be creating different dialogues, being able to create a, a living book, have. Different, um, different historical figures be able to be portrayed in a positive way. Our seventh grade students, I believe, created, um, for their math class. Um, a song that was created by a black artist, but instead did a parody using math lyrics. So there's gonna be a wide variety of things on display from six to six thirty that evening. And then from six thirty to seven, um, the music department along with. Um, our drumline dancers is going to be sharing some music to celebrate that evening as well. Um, finishing up, we're gonna have desserts from a black owned bakery and just give a chance for community to really come together. And be able to celebrate with us that evening. Any questions?
So I don't expect you to have this information right now, right? I'll leave with that. Um, but I would be interested at some point in knowing more about the survey results from January, so I think that we also have other surveys that have discussed. Or touched on student sense of belonging and it would be interesting to kind of see if we could quote code those or get a sense of how students are feeling.
So yeah, we, we go here.
It's great.
That's fine.
That was, that was, I had to share for spend survey, so, um. We also, so you mentioned that you're working on that two goals and then one of them is, um, staff and students being. Feeling like we're all pulling in the same direction, I can't, something.
Collective advocacy.
Thank you, um, so would you rely on staff and student, like the surveys, like that feedback to help determine some of that? So, and I know that last year, when did we do those?
Yeah, staff was coming out, we could just. We use the questions from most surveys, actually, for these surveys for the dipsticks, so we'll be able to track that growth and progress. So the surveys we did last year, she pulled her questions right out of there for the surveys we were talking about.
You basically copied the survey.
Just those couple of questions.
Oh, okay, but there's the whole survey, okay. So, okay, so we'd be looking at, you should be discussing.
Yep.
Getting those going. Um, and then I was just gonna ask, uh, about like the draft school schedule, I, I, I would be interesting to. It looks like you're just talking about that now, so it would be interesting to bring that back to the board, just to let us know where you land on that, like what, what you're thinking and what changes like. Maybe when it's, when you're there, but that might be like May or something, so just like putting that out there as a potential ask to. Share, I, like, this is great for us to get an overview, it'd be cool to have some share outs of some of that specific work you're doing and how it's impacting. You know, our name and then our dad and stuff like that.
I know some of the shorter things that I know came to my attention for that is just allowing, um, some of our core classes to have longer blocks of prep. Instead of the forty minute skinny, having eighty minutes together, which will allow them more time to be flexible within. I know just the grouping of things, so our hours, our minutes are going to stay the same. So it's definitely not as though anything is being reinvented, but just rearranging to maximize collaboration.
That's a good thing to share. Um, and then my last, like, just thinking out loud is, uh, for Spirit Week, are kids being talked to about what is appropriate? For these days, when you ask people to dress as a famous black icon, are you giving them guidelines around what is appropriate? And what that should look like, is anybody talking about that or is it just assigned students, see and they're gonna be left to their own devices?
Mr. Williams has been doing, um, daily announcements with, um, featuring different, um, famous black. People were famous for, um, a lot of different reasons and talking about them and I, during that time I have seventh graders with me. And they, um, are actually very interested in those, they, they said, oh, this is my favorite part this morning when that part came on. Um, I, we haven't, I personally haven't talked in that direction at the same time. Um, in my resource, um, a couple of weeks ago, we had, they were talking about blackface, about blackface is and. Um, why it was, and this came up randomly, and so. Some, our older students are aware, I don't, I'm not sure if we had a conversation in that direction with students.
We haven't, but it's, that's a, it's a great idea because we wouldn't want to see anything like that, anything negative will be taken the wrong way.
It's the education, I mean, HBCU day, you might wanna, I'm sure maybe you're talking morning announcements.
Oh, yeah.
It was on, what the color and stuff like that, but it just, that's just the first thing that popped into my head is, how might this go wrong?
Yes.
So, uh, but I, but I love it, it's cool and I'll try to pop in to see. Um, my last question, not, I don't think it's for you guys, but around the, the Black History Showcase, a couple of meetings back, we had talked about, um. The five thousand dollar stipend for the showcase that was coming from a grant, has that been located, is that being utilized?
That, uh, that is not being utilized, not.
Has it been located, like, it's, it's for Allison, thank you though.
I don't think, I don't think it was from a grant, but.
It's, it wa- well, according to Lindsay, it was a grant she secured for HBCU for five thousand dollars, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm meeting with the grant writer this week, so it'll be the first time that he gives like specifically what they were allocated for. But we did make sure that there's funding for the program, um, and it's just kind of scaling some things down and trying to find building less than five thousand.
So maybe after you give the grant writer, we're gonna understand that case better.
I just really wanted to, a- as a parent of two former Future City students. To go to national, come back with a special prize again, uh, maybe becoming regular for us, uh, but. It is amazing, uh, the level of effort that these students have been able to put in time and time again. To not only win at state, go national, uh, to get such a little, uh, recognition there. Uh, it's testament to the program here at, by the overall, the rally and to the students, uh. I mean, I just gotta tell you, there's so much time that they volunteer, uh, mornings, nights, weekends. Uh, it is amazing that, uh, they were able to get that bar. Uh, and, and I just wanted to, as, again, as, as parents, yes, I, I recognize the volunteer. That go, volunteering that goes in, it's the parents, but I am, so, uh, I, I just want to call it off, thank you.
Yeah, I hope, I hope we'll have a proper celebration, it's not like too, like, adjusting. But it, yes, congrats to them. Um, alright, we are moving on to item four B and I get to welcome our inaugural student ambassador. Mayela Avalos, am I saying it right? Mayela Avalos, thank you, um, do you mind, would you like to tell us just like a little bit about yourself and?
Um, my name is Mayela Avalos, I'm in seventh grade, um. And I really wanted to be a schoolward ambassador to, um, advocate for like my classmates and. Other people, like other students in the school, um, and I feel like I know I've heard a lot of. Perspective from other students, um, so I feel I'm qualified to, um, help advocate for them.
Awesome, well, so this is the time where we would ask you. If there are any student concerns or issues or things that you would like to bring to the attention of the board. Um, our student ambassadors are welcome to engage in discussion on all of our agenda items too, so feel free to pop in. Um, you're also free to leave after this section. So like, we have a late meeting, so you know, um, it's voluntary, uh, but if there's anything you wanna to bring to our attention, this would be a good time.
Um, I don't believe there's anything, uh, worth mentioning.
Okay, well, please, please chime in and let us know if there's anything worth discussing that you wanna share student perspective. Okay, I also let her know since Bob will probably be here that she can move seats. Alright, um, so we'll move on to item four C, that is the super independence report.
Alright, we have several things, um, in the report, a couple of them, I'm just gonna ask if you have any questions on. A lot of it's actually really connected to the presentation that you've heard around guiding coalitions. Uh, when we talk about strategic planning, uh, we know that we culminated that process in December. You can see some of the things I attached in Word docs around the work we did with Joe Schrader. Uh, some of that was paused for obvious reasons as we refocused our work over the last couple of months. We met as a leadership team this week and, um, scheduled some time. Uh, staff have a couple of professional developments days coming up where they're gonna have some time, um, to do record keeping and things like that. So the leadership teams can use that time to map out the rest of our strategic planning work, which includes maybe CPR card. Um, which is gonna be the one year plan, as well as determining the dashboard that would be on the district website. Um, that'll be a five year dashboard, so the committee did a lot of work identifying potential progress monitoring. Um, options and the team is pulling from that work. Um, connected to that in many ways is the sale work, we started sale, um.
The first year, yeah, just see if there's questions on strategic planning.
I, 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 um, so final documents have been shared with staff, so I was wondering how it, and those were shared. Uh, so we shared those at a professional development day and then we also start each professional development day circling back to the mission, vision. Commitments, we've had conversations with staff around the commitments the administrative team is making. Uh, we've got feedback from staff around commitments, one of the biggest pieces of feedback is accountability and making sure that. Um, they continue to be something that we focus on in every meeting, so we make sure we bring that back. Um, at every PD day, just today or this week, actually, the work is at getting those final documents up on the website. Uh, we're still cleaning that up a little bit, but then that'll be another share out with staff and the community to just sort of unveil the work. Um, in its final form on the website, and then as we work through the two additional pieces this spring, uh, those will also be brought to staff.
Will the documents be shared with the committee?
Yes.
How?
Um, I thought we would do it at the same time that we share the website, so when the website's done, we would unveil all that, do a nice, um, communication to. Um, the community around the work.
Like a heart, like a mailing or like a?
Oh. Then something we could talk about, obviously there's. Some costs associated with that, so that would be some planning that we would have to do, um, basically without using social media on the website to communicate out.
Well, and it could be creative, creative, that's right. Um, and then what's the deadline for the, or like what's the anticipated timeline when the CPR card would be, um. Finished and what is the timeline for the metrics, the dashboard going up?
So when we initially planned Joe on the dashboard, that was something that we planned to, um, roll out for the next school year. So that we would have the five years, five school years that we're tracking CPR card, um, we had a bit more ambitious on. Uh, but just based on the need to do some refocusing, we're looking at, um, that need more summer work.
Thank you. Yeah, oh, go ahead, so this is going to feel super picky, but I just, for, um, searching purposes, I noticed that the titles of the documents are GNRH.
Oh, yeah. We fixed, yeah, okay, and that was just Joe doing that, yeah.
I figured it was a typo, but I was like, trying to find it, that might be.
Yeah, that was how Joe labeled it, you know. And the sale is really, I mean, it's super connected, right? We started the sale work because we didn't have a strategic plan, because we recognized the need to have district priorities. And you heard, um, staff tonight talking about those two priorities that we're focused on this year. Um, that's kind of in lieu of having a strategic plan, plan will take place of that, that CPR card will be the pillars and the priorities and the goals. Um, the sale work was also very beneficial for the admin team, because it was a lot about what. Was spoken of earlier around guiding coalition and building those norms and learning how to work together as a team, learning how to trust one another as a team. I think that was just as valuable, uh, for the admin team going through the sale process, our last date is in March. Um, I've actually reached out to our sale coach though around potentially changing that a little bit again, because there's obviously some. Um, urgent work that needs to happen this spring and we think that we can map out our last hundred day sale plan. Have that lead into the strategic plan and not need an entire day for that work, so I'm gonna be meeting with the coach, um. Setting something up, it looks like for next week, just to talk about how we can make sure that we're using that timeline. The team that's really focused on what we need to be working on right now.
Oh, I'm curious if you, if you would, uh, be able to share, you know, you presented the hundred day plan. Maybe once, maybe twice, probably right at the beginning, but it'd be interesting to just see those documents, like how. Were completed and how they evolved.
Yeah, we just are finishing up our, under the, the current one and then we're gonna be backing up into the large study.
Well, if it's two years, right?
Always like last year's too.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we've seen them, so. Okay, we are moving on, oh, sorry, it's still part of the.
Um, so we've got some guests here tonight, so I'm gonna, and then over, um, we did some work as a. Leadership team the last couple of weeks, um, with Kim from Baird, Harry, um, obviously Gus and Todd. Really realize, realizing that we need to have some process set up, we need to be able to share with staff what next steps are, we need to prioritize. So two of the things that we know that we're gonna need to be looking at are the potential of an operational referendum and also some borrowing options. So Kim is here to help present, uh, with the team around the operational referendum piece. And then March sixth, Kevin will be here to dive deeper into. And then March sixth, Kevin will be here to dive deeper into um the loan options. So those were the two pieces that we wanted to make sure we got in front of the board. Thank you.
Let me just stand up there and click the board. Make it up and we need to point out something else, start sitting, right? Well, thank you for having us here today, I'm Kim, um I'm the school business specialist from the Baird Public Finance Team. Um and today we have um a teach here, your team. Um so of course Allison and as well as Gus over here, your interim business manager. Todd Gray, your school business management advisor, Kevin is presenting a different board meeting tonight, so. Allison said he'll be with you next time, he sends his regards, and then of course Carrie from. Okay, so we'll all speak, this is certainly a dialogue, if you wanna come up at any time, feel free to do so. Great, and of course, e- e- everyone knows they should chime in, this is certainly not. Um all my role that I'm presenting, I'm moving the presentation along today, but as um everyone has their. Their own roles, they will chime in, okay? So uh tonight, we're gonna talk about current budget status update. We're gonna review a suggested timeline for the board. Um and then we will uh talk about, included in the, in that timeline. Is the idea of possibly going to the, an operating referendum um within the next, within the calendar year. And so I'll go over the operating referendum basics, just for some food for thought as you move into the next couple of months, okay? Okay, so we all know why we're here, right? So we identified, the last time I met, we'd been virtually in January, we identified two um two needs. One is your short term need and your, your deficit, um projected deficit that you have in this year's current budget. And that projected deficit at that time, and these are still the numbers, the best numbers that we have, um. Is resulting in a negative fund balance, okay? Um so Todd and Gus are gonna speak a little bit about the work they've done um. Since that point to get you better numbers, um and then we'll talk about what happens after that, thanks.
Right, I've been going through a lot, I found basically, the, the numbers here, the, the revenues and. Expenditures, those are simply what is been buttoned for into the accounting system. That doesn't mean those are real at this point, um they could be more, they could be less, and that's what we're working at right now, looking at. What has taken place over the first seven months to determine what the, the last five months are gonna be. And then in terms of cash flow, what that cash flow is gonna look like through August and into September. Um the issue with, with uh looking at uh numbers in a, in an accounting system is. They don't always align with real cash flow, the adjustments are made, uh amounts are accrued, the amounts are. Are reduced for prior year approvals and so on, so it's just digging through, you've got probably a good. Thousand accounts between your entire budget and just going through and trying to figure out. What has been spent so far, what still has to be spent on each and every one of those accounts? And which of those could we uh kinda slow up quite a bit to uh. To, to, to close that gap between revenues and expenditures, so that's, that's the work I've been doing. Also tipping away on audit, but, but I think the cash flow, I think everyone agreed on the team that that is. Uh the most important factor right now, and then also building a good base for going into the twenty four, twenty five budget, which uh Gus is one.
The, as we talk about the cash flow. One of the things that we definitely at this point in time, after operating for seven months. One of the things we definitely will be able to calculate uh is payroll and fringe benefits. Now this be a matter, uh and I have talked, be a matter of one of my things I wanna do is sit down with payroll and say, okay. What has been our payroll, what's our payroll expense been the first payroll of each month, what's our payroll expense been the second? We should be fairly consistent in that, we can then project that forward for the remainder of. This school year and going into July and August, uh because teachers get paid in July and August, we should be able to calculate that. Be able then compare that to what we have in the, in the bank. What our bank balances are to see exactly where we will, where we will fall on that, so we'll be able to get uh. Work on that and then be able to share that with financial people to have them help guide us on any. On any short term borrowing that has to occur, because obviously the number one concern. That I have, and I'm sure you have too, with making sure that through all of this, that we're meeting payroll. And taking care of staff, and that, and that will, that again, we can, we can easily calculate and be able to. Compare the bank balance and stuff, yes, we'll then have to weigh what other expenses may be out there in regards to that, but at least we'll have an idea of where we stand. On bank balances versus what we will need to be paying our payroll and fringes, so that will be, that will be moving very quickly now. Yet we have, there's enough, there should be enough history of what we've actually been paying to be able to do that calculation. Uh and see where we're at on, on that. Sitting with the administrative team and stuff, we've talked to them about slowing down, definitely. Rapidly slowing down expenses for the, for the remainder of the year to try to, to offset some of, some of these things. And, and then. See exactly where we end up. Obviously, then I will start beginning, I now have staffing information that will start beginning with twenty four, twenty five staffing. Uh because again, we can, we can calculate that, uh we know where we are, we can compare. This numbers that we think we may have and see where we, where we fall on that, and staffing is, is the urgency because. We need to know by April fifteenth. Where we are with staffing uh by statute uh. And then be ready to issue uh by May fifteenth contracts for the twenty four, twenty five school year. So that is the, that is now the high priority of getting that information. My target, quite honestly, is by the end of March to be here or to be able to present to you. I deliver my information so that uh. Again, you would then be able, if there's any action that needs to be taken on staff, and you can do that. At your first April, April board meetings. Okay, I highlighted some of you, the process of all of this budgetary stuff will be presentation at one meeting. Action at another meeting. Uh we will not be that way then, you as a board have the ability to. To mull over the information, uh you may have questions that crop up afterwards, things like that, it also has an opportunity that the community. Knows what's being discussed and has opportunity for, for input and stuff like that, again, this is too important to go forward, we can. We do that. And move forward on all of this. Regards to that, so.
And, and there are a few bright spots, if that's something that we're, you know, we've got the full tester three available for this year yet. The, the difference between one eighty levy and needed expenditures is, is pretty significant than that. It's used towards cash flow too, so there are some bright spots that are gonna help us through this, but uh. We, we still just have a lot of digging to do over the next eight to ten days.
And again, my uh staff here has been very, has been working very hard. Already some grants that we had through the, through D P I, which normally in, in most situations would not be filed till June thirtieth, have been filed. Already now seeking reimbursement again as we continue to work at ways that we can. Crop up the cash, cash flow as, as quickly as we possibly can, so. And that work is continuing as I, as I meet with, with staff people here, so. We, uh there's a lot of, a lot of little pieces that are going on that are working to, to try to get to the. To the big piece of, of finding out exactly where we are and, and trying to deal with this cash flow situation.
Um is, are you still predicting that we're good on cash flow through August, does that still?
We, we may have to take some uh certain measures to that, whether, whether it's uh. Reducing or slowing down expenditures or looking at um uh. Fund thirty eight debt. That's, that's kinda what the cash flow. Trying to determine how much, or if any of that do we need to do, so.
And then if this is a question for later, I can hold it for later, but. Uh my, I mean, my main question is, what is the barrier to getting accurate numbers, like it's just, it's concerning to still see. The previous uh business manager's numbers there, and I'm wondering if we can talk about what those barriers are, maybe that's. For your updated, not the operational referendum, but I don't want, I'm just.
Well, I mean, uh i- i- in terms of the, the, the budgeted numbers, are those. I don't wanna say they're good at this point, but we're focusing on actual expenditures here regardless of what. What the, what the budget says, uh the budget is gonna be what the uh expenditures. And with, you know, five months left to go, um. To me, I, I don't wanna focus too much on the old budget, but try to get to cash flow and focus on twenty four, twenty five, because. Um I mean, everything I've found with the, the fund ten and twenty seven revenues is, is. They're off in some cases quite a bit, I've not, I've not seen any. I, I, I guess, I have a reason for why some of those budgets were set up that way. Uh but uh again, there's a little more urgent pieces, uh and I understand. It would be nice to see what you think is the real budget, uh and, and we may, we may get into that as we do the cash flow numbers. But I'm focusing on actual cash, that's cash payments that have been made through. Today's date versus what cash payments are gonna be needed through probably August, along with what revenues will be received in August.
So, okay, I guess I'm just wondering if. If there's something else we can be doing, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what? I'm in my own office right now, okay, hi, um I guess I'm, I'm just wondering if there's something else. We should be doing or could be doing to speed up that process of getting like an accurate accounting of, of. These numbers, right, like is it a deeper forensic audit, is it a third party comes in and?
We're doing that, it just takes time, like you have. I don't know, just a couple thousand accounts, within the whole system, going through and trying to figure out what, you know. Why was that number budgeted for, what is the actual expenditure to date, how much more um. Is gonna have to be expended from that account, if any, and then if, if, if there's a way to. S- slow that or stop any further expenditures from that account, and it's just, it's just. Time consuming, I mean realistically, to develop a budget, uh most districts. Start next year's budget three months ago, and, and, and so uh. That's all time consuming it takes.
The, the other issue we're running into as we, as we printed out. Budget expenditures and things like that, uh just give one example, you know, on the revenue side, uh. In January, you receive tax settlement from the municipalities for December tax pay. That's not recorded in revenue with expenses. It's like, okay, so now we're having to go through and look and see as we look at these expenses, not only. How accurate are they, but are there other things that may have occurred that for, for whatever reason, and we don't know why, whatever reason. Was not, you know, have not been reported, so we gotta try to. Not only verify expenses that we're seeing, but then looking and saying, are there's, is there going through transactions and things like that, are there other things out there that need to be. That need to be reported uh in there, now my conversation with administrators and things like that was. That everything, uh you know, part of the issue we have is that. Business manager kept. Right there, sprinkle hold on all information. That's who had all the information, so as we're, as Todd and I are going through things, we, we're even starting to be able to ask administrators. Can you, can you give us any insight, can you give us anything, and their response is no, because we were never, nothing would ever share it with them. Uh so, you know, we're dating through this and, and, and getting through it. Uh my concern is, as I'm looking at going on twenty four, twenty five budget. My concern is, what did we actually spend this year, because as I look at what was budgeted. I'm not gonna be able to do the budget to budget uh. Budget for twenty four, twenty five, so I, you know, you gotta get to the actual and say, okay, what did we actually spend? And then that'd be budget, you know, compare twenty four, twenty five budget to, to actual spending, you know, in this school year. It is, again, we're making progress and, and I will tell you once again, staff has been bending over backwards, at least. For me, it's certainly, I'll let Todd, I won't put that word to Todd's mouth, but they've been bending over backwards, trying to get us whatever information, trying to find things. I've opened a list with some things already for uh that they have discovered, that they have concerns about regards to. Potential uh budget cuts, things that could, that could occur, and they're, they're finding out information. And things like that, so it's all coming together, it's just gonna be a, it's going to be a uh thing that's a little longer than. That people may, may like, but, but.
I have one more question, which is, is that with, with their world in which it would be beneficial to. Ask our former business manager to come in and sit down with you guys for these questions that nobody has answers to and information that nobody else. Has, is there's.
Bank recs, yes, because what I see, what was done, I'm not finding any. Supporting documentation, so there's no way to determine why these entries were paid in, in. Doing the bank record, that's part of the twenty two, twenty three audit. And then also perhaps to provide some, maybe you've got two good people down there right now who could do a lot, it's just a shame that they weren't given more. Responsibility, so you get more than one set of eyes on some of these problems. And, and I think a recommendation in the future is to, you know, diversify some of those responsibilities in this office. Uh along with doing a, a major forecast, uh wherever I've been, uh I said, we, I wanna. Forecast by mid to late January of what it's gonna look like through, over the next six months. Catch a lot of these issues early then, you have, you have some time to handle, fortunately, there is some time here, we have some time here, there's time to. Fix things happen, so yours to uh, the advantage to that way, but uh. You, you know, while we're doing this work, it, it would be my hope that uh we could also do some training of uh, you know, trees and out there. Cop's got a good, excellent county background, you know, she could take on some of these other responsibilities that again. Get two sets of eyes on, that's something, tell us something's on.
The, you know, and then from my standpoint of working on twenty four, twenty five budget, I've talked to the most. Throughout my career, I always gave administrators a lot more responsibility. In preparing their own building budgets and things like that, uh. To follow purpose, number one, they have the, they have the best knowledge of what's going on in their building and, and should be able to budget for it. I'm not the one who should be budgeting, number two, that just gives, within their building, that just gives another set of eyes. With the look at budget printouts and things like that, I, I mean, I'm also gearing for the future. That start training these people so that in the future, they would, you know, things would, would surface much quicker. Uh if you have a whole bunch of eyes on, on things. With all administrators looking at, at their own areas and stuff, that, you know, things would surface real much more quickly. Uh and do that, now again, that's gonna take a little time, also as we go through this, I mean, yes. I could throw together a budget real quick or quicker, but I don't want to, I also wanted. I could throw together a budget real quick or quicker, but I don't want to, I also wanted, if I'm here, I want to set it up such that we got steps in place, take care of things in the future so that there, you know, we will not be, we will not be on this road ever again. This road will, will disappear and, and go forward. So I'm looking at it as, as a, the two-phase two-phase part of this is, is finding out where we are, getting yourself ready for twenty-four, twenty-five, but also making sure that I'm working with administrators and staff to know that twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, all the, you know, into the thirties. That there's all these guidance, the steps in place that they can easily monitor what's going on.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so while that's happening, we have been reviewing your cash flow and looking at, you know, with our guest, the best guess right now, what the numbers are and what your cash flow will, will look like. Um, and we do anticipate, you know, based on what we've seen and it's only as good as what we've gotten. It's not the original four million dollar deficit. We're, we're down to two point six million and that's what we're, you know, working off of. But we do think you should be prepared to consider a fund thirty-eight loan to be drawable as early as you first. So that's why Kevin will be here in March because, um, you'll notice in the timeline that represented enough to the slide that as soon as, uh, updated budgeted numbers for this year, um, happen and, and end of the year projections happen, we can refine that cash flow and refine that number. But it's important for you to understand the, the fund thirty-eight loan process. So he'll be here to speak to the fund thirty-eight loan process. And then, um, hopefully we'll be able to get refined cash flow numbers and a refined number. We'll talk more about that in a little bit. Um, but why is that important? Uh, so we didn't go over this last time, so I just wanted to, to touch on this a little bit. You know, you do short-term cash flow borrowing and then we're talking about this one thirty-eight loan, which is longer, you know, five to ten years. Um, and so when we're talking about fund balance and fund balance is a deficit, what does that mean? So fund balance is your overall ending equity in your general fund. The fund balance is not a measure of cash. It's a measure of assets minus liabilities on June thirtieth of the fiscal year. Okay? Assets can be cash. They can also be receivables. Liabilities can be payables or payrolls due to people, things like that. So cash coming in and out has something to do with it, but it's not the whole picture. Um, a district with an appropriate fund balance, so a, a fund balance, a rule up on this three to four months um, of, of expenses and it's an appropriate fund balance for twenty, twenty percentage, right? But a, a district with a, with a appropriate fund balance can accumulate sufficient assets to make designated purchases or cover unforeseen expenditures. Right? So I always give the example of, um, just this, in this case, it works just like your savings account. What happened at home, you know, what happens if a boiler break or a well goes bad, you may have a budget for one of those, but maybe not both of those in any given year. So we need to be able to in the sense, just like your savings account dip into fund balance for one-time non-repairing expenditures in, in unforeseen circumstances. We also like to have a fund balance so that we can demonstrate financial stability and preserve or enhance our bond rating. And what that does is that our bond rating makes us look more favorable to debt issuers and more favorability means less interest rates, right? So less interest costs that we have for future borrowing costs should include your fund thirty-eight loan, also include a future capital project loan. So saving the taxpayer, um, interest costs as well. And then fund thirty-eight, or I'm sorry, fund balance is, what we're talking about a lot today is avoiding excessive short-term borrowing and avoiding associated interest or short-term borrowing. So talk about that on the next slide. On the bottom is an example of a fund balance, um, scenario where, where revenues and expenditure, right? So revenues in a school district don't happen. Um, like at home, we don't get paid in payroll every two weeks. We pay the payroll every two weeks, but we don't get paid. Right? Most of our revenue, seventy to ninety percent of a school district's revenue come from taxes and equalization. Equalization, we don't get a lot of equalization here. So that's in December. It's very small. The largest portion of your revenue is in January and February. But school started six months ago almost, right? So we need to pay teachers, right? So a fund balance is able to cash flow us or carry us until we get that revenue. And if we don't have that, then we have to do short-term borrowing in the form of the line of credit or a tax anticipation.
That's a very good question about that. Normally we do short-term borrowing anyways, and we don't like to dip into that fund balance even to pay off that.
Correct. Then you, you wouldn't, you can't. Um, so because fund balance is a measure of assets minus liabilities on June thirtieth, because you're doing short-term borrowing, that means you don't have the cash to pay those bills. A lot of school districts do short-term borrowing. Right? That's very common. Where, where we're talking about is when you won't have the funds to pay back your short-term borrowing note and show that you have positive, uh, and Kevin will show this. He'll talk about this more. He's actually the better person to speak to this. But, um, you don't have funds to pay back your current life or your current so you need to take out a lot of credit to pay back essentially. So it's, it's on top of it. Um, as you have questions that come up about this, um, and I told Alison that's to mention this, but I'll mention it too. With all of these, you know, you know, interest, how it's interest work and things like that, if you write them down and send them to Alison, she'll forward them to Kevin so we can make sure these things are turned down. Yes, things come up in your mind about how does this work or why does it work this way? Um, he, as the banker, I think it's a surprise.
So I think it's our board policy now that, uh, our fund balance needs to be ten percent of our, uh, revenue.
A total, it's usually total general fund expenditures, is how we.
Oh, expense. So that and some short-term borrowing, uh, help us from July till December and then January in the tax levy. That's what we can pay back.
It starts to get paid back. Yeah. So you'll have different.
So we start paying back the loan in January.
The fund thirty-eight loan?
Yeah.
Um, that's dependent. He was talking about different structures because you'll also be in a, a budget next year where you're going to need to, you know, reorganize that. So they'll go over those different structures or options that the board would have to structure their loan.
Oh, so I guess in a typical scenario.
Typical scenario, a short-term borrow, you'd pay that back, yeah, in the spring, summer. But then you'll have that and then on top of that, you'll have like your mortgage rate, right? Like your regular.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So just to clarify for you in the audience, this is just a visual representation. It's not representative of our district in any way.
Yes, this is a, this is an example. It's, it just shows how expenditures, um, you know, go like this. We pay payrolls, right? Every two weeks, every twice a, twice a month, but our revenues come in like this. And so you have to have a fund balance to support those areas.
But that is pretty normal for a school district, available revenues in July, June, and then the high expenditures.
That's how we all, yeah, yeah. Okay. Uh, so that brings us to the other item that you've all seen before, right? Which is the long-term forecast. And that's my role in this is taking the budgeted numbers, um, and forecasting them out into the future. Okay? So as we talked about, you have short-term borrowing, but you also have a long-term borrowing. This is that snapshot again from January with those numbers that, um, we will refine. We will rebuild this as soon as we can get, uh, an updated budget. And incorporated in that, we will have to incorporate any payback of that fund thirty-eight loan. So I know you were talking, you understand how this works, right? We will have payments over five to 10 years that in addition to a, a deficit of two point six that, you know, or a number like that, that you'll need to reconcile. You'll also have an additional payment that then to pay back that, that we need to build into the budget as well. So we'll build all of that in and make sure you're thinking, thinking a whole picture. Um, when, when we see that. Okay? Any additions? Okay. So this is really what we're here to talk about today is the budget timeline, right? So came together and we said, here are all the roles and responsibilities of all of these different people. And how does this all work together in a way that moves you forward throughout the next six months? So as we said, um, the first order of priority is to update the current budget for the purpose of the end of your cash flow and, um, ending fund balance and fund thirty-eight borrowing needs. Because of the steps that are required with resolutions with one thirty borrowing needs, we need a little bit of time to allow, uh, allow things to happen. Um, so we're hopeful that we can dial in that number by the next. This does go in sequential order, but also understand that all of this is happening continuously at once, right? As soon as Todd and Gus will give us numbers, they'll have another update. That's how our job works, right? We'll constantly refine our budget and we'll constantly be tweaking that. The next step in that is forecasting the future budget. Like I just talked about, we'll forecast the next, next four years. We'll talk about the assumptions that we want to plug into this forecast. We'll include a fund thirty-eight payback. And then also, um, the board will be talking about the good hope building options, right? We started talking about that. How does this play into that? And Alison will lead those discussions and, and how that all works with this because that is something to factor into all of these moving parts as well.
So, and just, if I may, two things, not just good hope, and I just want to go to the side here. First of all, I mean, and I, I think there's no way to point discussing good hope and how good hope may help in this process and that part of the game. Down the road, but one thing that I've always been told, I am able to confirm myself, but I always understand that Lundell District, School District owns the property which Whitefish Bay School District head for disowned by Dell because that's Lundell. And before we go too far down the road here, it's not, well, you know, probably for the property. I think it's really important that we get prepared in that. As long as that is on board, I've been told to be able to a long-term uh, zero-dollar lease to Whitefish Bay, the lot of the communities. Our buildings, long as used for education purposes, which is why they have their administrative office there. But their, uh, headquarters, uh, and, and I just, I want to have that thrown out there to, when we look at it, it, it's true and there, and there are main offices, just problems on my notes, Lundell, and we really own, you know, the property. You guys, uh, good, I, I know you guys probably have heard some of that, you know, I've been told many, many times uh, in the past, I would like to explore how accurate that is and I want to say kick Whitefish Bay out. It's, it is true, but I think that it's important for us to also change that, uh, development and not to.
You have to look at, right now, you have to look at all options. Doesn't necessarily mean even, even the good hope doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to do anything, but you have to put them all on the table right now. And, and weigh the pros and cons of them and then, and then ultimately make a decision. And so if there is this issue with if Whitefish Bay, yeah, we have to, you know, we got to try to find out what's going on and that, that has to be laid in front of the board also. I mean, that's, that's another option. We're not leaving, and I don't think that we can leave any option on, on the turn. I mean, it has to be, every option has to be explored.
And, and I can't, but actually it's just something that I've always been told from different administrations and on board. So, uh, but it, it, it's a very reasonable statement. It's only just one example. It doesn't get lost.
Good point. I think Alison.
Could, could you go back to the previous, um, and, and that's a good point. I mean, you see the, the, uh, the forecast there. It's a pretty ugly numbers, but they're only ugly if you want it. It's ugly. I mean, the, the point is you're making uh, reductions as you, that, that's part of the forecasting process and to determine what revenue enhancement you can do, you know, looking for every possible dime you can bring in and then looking at expenditures that can be reduced, um, so that you don't have that annual surplus, which you can see adds up pretty quickly. So you're right. You, you, you want to look at every possible piece of revenue you can get a hold of. Does it, you know, I mean, like I said, those numbers are pretty ugly. You need to make sure that, um, that's not what really happens.
Well, and, and the board knows, but what we said at the last board meeting is that's not possibly, right? So, um, the work to, to create the future that will be, uh, will hopefully.
Well, it's not thirty-four trillion, so.
Um, I, I think I'd be on the floor. Um, all right. So we've written down that to look into Alison will look into that with probably and definitely something to bring up. Yes. As you think about different options and ideas, certainly, um, you know, message them to us as our ear team, as you, as you think through things, because there's a lot to unt. Um, as this is going on, Harry, uh, from the Donovan Group and Alison are working on a community survey. He'll come up and talk about that. Um, that will happen in the next couple of months, in the next three to four months or so. Um, that will overview operational referendum questions as well as the programming questions, kind of phone in on what's important um, to the stakeholders in your community. Okay? And then the board will work through the discussion of whether or not you choose to go to operational referendum um, in the fall possibly of, uh, twenty twenty-four that you have.
Yeah, we keep saying, if we choose, I'm under the impression we don't have a choice. You have, you all have a choice. That we don't have a, a choice.
Choice.
Well, I, I, yes, I understand the board, but I mean, I'm under the impression that if we don't do, uh, an operational that it's almost a certainty. So what is the, in what world do we not do it?
You cut expenses enough to cover.
And we don't know how much we would need to cut at this time.
You don't, I mean, relatively soon, hopefully we will.
Yeah. Or increase revenue, I should say that as well. Increase other revenues or cuts.
So relatively soon, so the way this timeline, I'm looking at it, and I know some of these are concurrent, but is it possible to put dates or estimated time, like estimated times, if you might, like, do you have some sense of? Maybe it's two weeks, maybe it's three. I know, you know.
And we're, we're just working as quickly as we can, but it's just.
I know it's a lot. I know, I know it's a lot.
Trying to dig through it, um, but
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully, I, my goal was end of February is still, still better put to that.
We, I mean, we, we know, what we do know is like I said, I come to the campaign, I know that my deadline is April fifteenth.
Yeah, I know there's some.
That we know. We know that, we know that there's certain things, if we decide to go to operational referendum, you know, if we, if we decide that we're doing that in August, we know what timelines, when we're going to have to approve them, when you're going to have to make decisions, when we're going to have to approve those types of things. Uh, what we don't know is right now yet is we don't know a number. Uh, and so, you know, there are timelines with all of these right now. Again, the, the missing link is we got to get a number for you to discuss and then decide. Okay, we will lay out options, you know, and obviously one of these is operational referendum. Uh, and that will be something that, you know, you'll have to, you'll have to discuss once we get everything in front of you. When if we start telling you, okay, here's what we may have to cut. Things like that, you might look and say, okay, operational referendum is our only choice. Uh, you may look and say, guess what? We'll bite the bullet for a year. And we don't need to do this, this year. But again.
No, that's fair and that helps me understand my, my.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we're, we're trying to start laying out all the options and yes, are you going to be overwhelmed right now? You are, because there, there's, there's a lot of options out there, but, but we do need to do due diligence and, and present these to you. Uh, so that you can start to think about about what, what's going to be, what could be coming forward. Again, we're surprised once we're trying, Todd and I are making sure that we're not surprised when you start, okay. Anyhow, bottom line is, bottom line is we're, we're done trying to, we're, we're hoping to get done with surprises.
Yeah, thank you.
Those are the good surprise.
Well, don't keep that from us there.
You know, I did pass around some timeline. So we are working on specific dates towards that end, right? Because there are drivers. So there's one of each, if you could take one of each.
Um, that's.
Well, we're working on the operational referendum because one, because we're starting to now go into the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year in July, when you're working on community feedback for your operational referendum. Gus and Todd will be really working on two budgets. One, if an operational. One, if an operational referendum passes and one of it fails. So as you go through the next six months, um you'll often hear us talk about the variables. Right? And and really that's because when it comes down to it, you really will approve two budgets in October. And then the budget that you take will be continued upon, if you would just go and that we can say that if you go to operation, that that helps. Um, but if you go to operational referendum, um then voters will decide which budget. Okay, so to that end, uh an operational referendum in the fall of twenty twenty four. Could happen in August on the fall primary or in November. On uh the general election, okay? And I've included for you the the um detailed timeline behind each of those dates as well. So you can kind of see how that backs up in the work that the board and administration has to do throughout the summer. To build to that operational referendum. So these are just suggestions. Uh, but general guidance is that you start working on that soon, okay? And one of those things that you do is survey the community.
So first of all, everyone, I will note that the dates provided up here are, I I know you're still trying to determine your use of surveys. The reality is is that if if school perceptions was here tonight, I think they would go with their similar dates for this. Also, it's based on the idea of this one on November election, uh putting a question there. Now, we did, we did talk about an August one. I will tell you a couple of things. One, uh August would be a very quick turnaround on a survey. Would also not allow you much time to engage your community regarding, you know, where you're at, how you got here, what you're doing to. Make sure doesn't, you know, that you've got mechanisms in place, that sort of stuff. I think you want to have time to have these conversations. I also think you want to have kind of time to have conversations with your family, the families, because one of the things I was preparing for is to do a community survey about facilities. And, you know, the reality is that you're going to have families who are going to be like, well, what happened there? You know, why aren't we still doing that? Can we do that in addition to this? You know, so those are going to have to be conversations that take place as well. So again, just to repeat what I said before, this is based on November. The other reason why I'll tell you, I think, why November is valuable. So while we were sitting there, I was doing some research and and Alice is not surprised that I do that a lot. In August of twenty twenty two, the last time we had an August primary in Wisconsin, because it happens every, it every even number of years. You had approximately four thousand people who voted in the city of Glendale. The last time we had a presidential election in November of twenty twenty, we had about eighteen hundred. Um, Todd and Gus will tell you and so so folks with WSB. The best success rates for school districts are with presidential or gubernatorial election cycles. Then it becomes the April primary and I would say that are the April general election and then the primaries are the ones that have the least amount of success. Hence why you didn't see very many yesterday when on Tuesday, from the state. Okay, so again, we can turn these, these dates, we can turn around pretty quickly. I will tell you that let's look at that third column. The reason why I gave you three windows. First of all, I want you to have your information in May. And then be able to show up a report in June, and I think Bill would tell you the same thing. Because um even though you have until August twenty seventh to make that decision, I'm going to suggest you're going to want to make the decision sooner. So again, you can let your community know what you're looking for. So again, you know, everything's sort of predicated on when we want to do that and working backwards. So as a result, you know, again, in in school perceptions, they do the same thing. They'll give you a two, three versions of it, of a survey. We'll wait for numbers. How we do this is, I mean, the reality is that just because you're looking at four years down the line, thirty two million doesn't mean we necessarily ask for thirty two million. Because it is a combination of both revenue, additional revenue through an operational referendum and potential some cuts. I mean, I'm not trying to scare anybody, but I I Allison and I told her, we did a survey for Northland. In in April, they're going to do an operational referendum that failed last year. We're pretty confident it's going to pass this time around, one, because they were able to tell their community why, you know, what they had to do as a result of it not passing. But that's, I mean, without getting into specifics, I think you have to have those conversations as well. You need to get your story out there and you need to let people know what it means. It's one thing to see, okay, oh, we're looking at six million this year, another six million next year, even with a one point five eight last year of your current operational referendum. But it's another thing to know what that means in terms of programming and in terms of staffing, class sizes, those things will matter to your community. I mean, the good news is your last three operational referents have passed with about sixty five percent support. So obviously you have a very supportive community in terms of education. The other thing is, I was looking at the numbers, you two are going to laugh, in my district where I used to work, we called it Don Johnson Math. He was the superintendent back in the early two thousands. And he just quickly put numbers together, but when I looked at your taxing, the tax impact to your last operational referendum, which they said was. The general setup was ten forty on a two hundred thousand dollar home. Well, the average home in Glendale now is three hundred and one thousand. So again, but you'd be looking at si- four times more than if you were to go to six million per year. Uh with no with no cuts in terms of keeping that. So again, the good news is we're not talking about it being in the hundreds of dollars. You know, it might be sixty, seventy dollars in terms of tax impact on an average size homes, what I'm going to guess. I'll let the experts figure that out, but um but again, that's that's a different conversation and maybe having a conversation where we're asking for a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand. Or a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollar tax, tax. So um so that's sort of the survey timeline. Um, again, you'll have ample time to make a decision. And um one last thing about this, I'll say about the survey, because you've seen a lot of surveys that we've done. Community surveys are a little different. So when I bring those results forward, and and Bill does it pretty similar. Um, we'll give you three sets of data. What is all responses? Now, the reality is is all responses are going to look pretty good, and the reason why is the majority of people who are going to take this survey. Are going to be your families who are going to be the most supportive folks, all right? Then we'll provide you with a comparison group result, and that's going to be people who don't have a direct affiliation with the history. If you were to look at those results, you think, whoa, we can't, we'd be lucky going to die, all right? Neither one of those are going to be the ones I'd suggest you look at. The one we really want to focus on is a weighted one, because about seventy percent of the people who live in pretty much any community. Don't have children, don't have a direct affiliation with the history. So we'll give a seventy percent weight, and that's going to be pretty spot on, I think, with what we can expect. And then the last piece is, I would encourage you again, no matter who you go with, to ask multiple options in terms of how much taxpayers we want to support. Because if you ask one, really, with taxpayers, they're pretty savvy. They figure out, you just want to know, is this going to pass or not? The other thing is you want to give yourself some options in case, let's say, the community says we can't support thirty million over the next four years. But we can support fifteen or twenty. That at least gives you a starting point to say, we've got that for additional revenue. Now, what would we have to do for cuts in order to balance our budget, get a fund balance?
Can I just ask a question? This, I I just want to make sure, I I did something here. We had multiply by eight million dollar uh referendum. You have two point six million dollar fund balance, I get that one pattern, of course, there's, you know, something to be said about this, but. You know, we looked at, you know, the projection of the potential deficit to the before going to developing. I mean, is isn't it a little bit too early to be thirty two million over four years, right? Okay, yes, I mean, because we're 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 saying that repeatedly of this conversation right now. And I worry that when you say it, you know, someone's going to hear it, suddenly they're going to say we need thirty two million dollar referendum in the fall. That's just not the case. And and maybe, maybe we'll be, maybe that's a decision, and I get that, but I just want to make sure it's clear. Right now, we're just talking about a referendum project. And we're talking about, you know, dollars that are not necessarily real, right? But our objective is based on if we do nothing. So I just want to make sure we're not taking thirty two million dollars.
I got this extra round of per dollars, but one thing I will say is this is that I understand where they're coming from, but at a year from now, your one point five eight will drop off. So you won't have that revenue anymore. So unless your, unless revenue changes, let's say. Student only growing up or the next financial budget having a revenue level increase, you know. You're you're, you can kind of figure out where your revenue is at. So that equils now, if you're not going to get new revenue, you're looking at what cuts can be. So so new revenue would be one of, besides those options, would be some sort of operation. The dollar month.
Yeah, yeah, because we have not, we have, yeah. You're not hearing Todd or I talked about any dollar amount in this referendum yet, because they don't, we don't have, we don't have good information. To be able to come up at this point, they're even working bare enough to come up with a number. Like I said, you have a projection, a a absolutely worst case scenario of of what it could be. But none of us believe that it's, I certainly don't believe. And if I'm doing my job, that that shouldn't, that we should be ever getting anywhere close to that number.
Uh, that's all I want to address. I mean, I I I I saw that slide and I, you know. A- a- and I had to thought about what to say about, you know, I think Todd, you've uh made a comment yourself that, you know, it it. That that projected, uh what if we do nothing hypothetically? Uh, I just want to make sure that's buttoned there. Yeah, yeah.
And you know, like you said, one last thing, and I know that people think over. So the other thing a lot of districts are asking us to do. When we put out a survey is asking the community if they would support a recurring versus a. Obviously, your last three referents have been not recurring. Um, and you know, again, I think there's some slides coming up. You'll see the percentage of successful rates is similar between the two. The difference is about eighty percent of all referendum questions that pass in Wisconsin are not recurring. So the other thing I would tell you is that if sixty five to thirty five percent supported the last three. You're probably starting with thirty to thirty five percent who won't support either version. So you have, so we have to look at that too, if we're going to ask that.
Yeah, the Nicolay referendum shows past to consider, right, as well, and that might impact peoples.
So I thought a lot.
No, 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 thank you. I do have a couple of questions.
Um, so the first question I had was with regards to um offering. Different options for referendum, right, in the survey? How do you describe the impact of those different financial options? Because I think sometimes, you you're right, people are looking at the numbers, right? Looking at the impact understandably on how that's going to work in their lives. But how do we help them understand what that means for our schools? And that these numbers aren't just casually being presented as, well, this is our pie in the sky and this is our bottom line, like we're just making it work. Really highly drawn that picture.
So one of the things that will have to take place over the next month or two, this is we're looking at a survey. Is again, being able to explain to people what it means with all those things. So again, what does it mean in terms of, well, well, there have to be some some linear layoffs or attrition from the term sense or thing. And what that means, for example, with class sizes, would there be programming that has to, that has to change? When we did Northland, what we were able to say is that class sizes went out because the last one didn't pass. We're able to say they they got rid of this already banned because they were no longer, but there were three or four of them as well. Those then help. The other thing, the other piece is then when you provide those numbers, so whatever numbers. You're able to say, well, with this, we might, and without going into specifics, because you don't want to tie your things to sport. But you'll be able to say, we need to address a couple of the things that were listed above. With the second number, maybe we can address half the things that were listed above. Some districts even ask us to provide a thing that helps the less the community prioritize. So you at least know where they would like to see the plan spent. I'm not saying you should do that, I'm just saying some districts have asked that. Think you said that's something else, hope for that, at least they're very unfortunate.
Yeah, thanks. So then the other question, I'm not sure that you're the right person to ask, but uh but. The uh recurring versus not recurring, my understanding is the danger of a recurring is that you lock yourself into a set amount. And then something changes and suddenly you're committed to this level of income. But then there's a fluctuation in the economy or the market and your need as a district has changed and yet you're kind of. Does it get more complicated for the community when you're doing a recurring referendum versus a non-recurring?
What I would say is typically most districts want, you know, like most residents want to feel this oversight. So they would say we'd like not recurring. Is you want to know how you do over the next three or four years? You know, are are issues there on funds wise, is anybody able to get things back the way they should be? You know, and in that in which case it's like, if you need to make that, come back again, and it might look that it might be something similar to your last twenty, which we advanced slightly versus each time. So instead of one point five eight, it would be two million or so, I'm just throwing a number out there, obviously. But on the other hand, you know, what a lot of districts like about recurring, you should now raise the revenue of the program. Does mean you can never make another ask, recurring or not recurring. But you've raised your revenue and then buy that dollar amount faster.
Thank you. Um, if I can just add, um, talking to districts, it's been important is. Non-recurring is for a set number of years, but if you choose to go with recurring, you can look at how we describe both of those in the three slides here. Um, it's important that the the public understands that it is a perpetuity, but it's not necessarily a cure all forever, right? So so to Harry's point, if something changes and, you know, we we present a number of options to work. The board makes their best guess, you know, the further out we go, that's like I have a little meteorologist picture, the harder it is to project, just like the weather band. Um, and so if things change, you have to be honest with the community and say, we may be back to ask you. Would, you know, we don't have to levy to what we need, we all have the ability to under levy as well. Um, but uh, you know, the messaging around recurring referendum doesn't have to be that it's cure all forever more. It can be, uh, this is what we expect, we, if we do, we need more, we we may come back to.
Yeah, and I would just tell you, personal experience. Having been a superintendent, but because we were from Madison, we went. Okay, I always get confused. We had, we had to go back to the community every, every couple of years. Uh. And again, they passed seventy to thirty roughly, but but I got from. From my community that they wanted the opportunity, the votes. Every, every time it came up, and they wanted to vote for the full amount. There was never an issue that it wasn't going to pass, but they, the community sentiment at that point in time was, we got to say. We're having a say in what's going on. Uh, now, after I left. They uh decided, you know what, you've been asking for this all the time, and they got to the point of saying, why do you keep coming back every couple of years? You're asking for the same amount of money and they did pass, you know, the other type. And and now it's, now it's locked in and permanent and the, you know, the community's attitude switched over the years. I think part of this, my advice to you would be as board is you've got to get a good s- good feel of what the sentiment of this community is. In regards to the type of referendum they want. Yes, maybe we'll need to go, go, you know, a few times every few years. And and have it be approved, but ultimately at some point they may look and say, okay, you know what, we're tired of. Of having this referendum in front of us, you know it's going to pass, so just make it permanent. And so that, but that falls on, I would tell you that that falls on you as a board to get the 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 read of what the community, what the community may want.
Do you see boards do that through? I mean, outside of this survey that you're talking about, would that be like community discussion?
Well, some, the beginning, in in my, in my case, you know, when I was superintendent of party, well, we didn't do surveys, but we were a small community. And I would be, you know, and I was out there in the community and stuff like that, and I would hear, I would hear comments when I was. At the grocery store or someone would stop me. I heard comments when I was filling up with gas. Uh, you know, again, it it's small community, it it's, you know, there's maybe, you know, obviously it would be different than this community. Uh. Yes, you could get it via survey. Survey would certainly be one thing, but you may, there may be people who are willing to voice that. To, or you may, you may get it both ways. You know, you decide, okay, let's do the survey, but you're also hearing from individuals when you're out and about. Uh, at a school function or and at some type of activity and they and they talk to you.
Yeah, you know, I could too, because I spent a decade with, I'll explain, so. Twenty, even if you carry to twenty twenty two, they passed the largest operational referendum in the state. And the reality is the dollar month they asked for, agenda being divided up for four years. Did not have, did not have a whole support of the survey. So what did they spend their next four months or weeks? They passed in July, they spent all their time on health explaining.
Like torture tour, like.
Oh, it's pretty much, I think I attended sixty sessions of the community and every organization, because I I helped that with it as well. So it's 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 going to depend on everybody to make sure the community understands why this, whatever you, whatever you.
So that's why you have the results in early June. So then throughout the summer, you can have those community sessions. So um and plan those so that prior to uh the August interview date. You, you know, know which way your community wants. Okay, so uh I know this is a, and this is my scene, because now we can get into graphs and charts. Um, I know this is a chart you've seen before, but just to clarify for everybody, this is what we're talking about. Um, the revenue, this is our total tax level, okay? This is this year, this is not the next year's numbers, this is what it was this year. Uh, the total tax level is fourteen point nine million dollars. That is comprised of your revenue limit authority equation, which includes funds and in your current fund thirty. That is comprised of your revenue limit authority equation, which includes funds ten and your current fund thirty-eight. So you have a current fund thirty-eight payment, that is annually about two hundred thousand dollars. And then the rest of your revenue limit authority is used in your general fund today. This revenue limit authority equation already includes a one point five eight million non-recurring referendum exemption, which we'll look at in a minute. All that's included in this bucket. Then on top of that, you have a, a district typically sometimes has a fund thirty-eight referendum debt that's inefficiental to that. And that's a debt fund for capital projects. And so I know Kevin's been here, and that's when you've seen this, to talk about adding the levy in this area, so this is where that would come in. That's separate for, for building or renovations. And then you have a community service fund levy, fund eighty. This year is one point seven five one. We expect that in future years, that can go down to where it was before, which was about five hundred, five hundred fifty thousand. Okay, take all those numbers, you add them together, and you get your total tax levy. You divide your tax levy by your equalized values in your district, so the value of all the funds in the district. Multiply it by a thousand, and you get your mill rate, okay? All right. Any questions on where that, where that operating referendum falls? So it's right inside of this revenue limit according, okay? So this year, you have one point five eight, so you're in the fourth year of a five-year non-recurring referendum. And I like this little chart because it speaks to a little bit about what we were just talking about, the history that you guys have had. The N R's in that third column means non-recurring. So each time that it's passed here, an operating referendum has passed, it's passed as a non-recurring referendum. So your community is in a, in a cycle of going to, to non-recurring referendum, okay? Now, going in, no, let's say, November of twenty twenty-four, um, and passing the two budget scenario that we talked about means that you can stack on an additional non-recurring referendum in, include, to um adding on to that one point five eight. So let's say, you know, you wanted the total to be three, you'd ask for another one point four two. And then, in the years after that, you would bump up your number. So you could do a four-year or a five-year after that. But the first year would be, uh, probably, uh, you know, you could, you could step that up, we'll work at that. Um, but whereas normally, you, you go five years, and then you ask for the next year, we're talking about a, a fall referendum that would stack onto the current. Okay? So these are the different types of referendum questions. The one on the way right is the debt question, that's from thirty-nine question. Okay, so that's just important that you understand that's a totally different type of question than the two operating questions, which are the ones in the purple. Um, you have two options for an operational referendum. You can choose non-recurring or recurring, right? Either of these, like I said, can step up, they can be a, a, uh, the same amount for as many years. Or they can step up, so they can be one million, one point two million, one point three. And, and your bond counts will words that appropriately, there are the wordsmiths and all of that. Um, and Perry can definitely show you more statistics on when you're comparing one to the other and what you decide. Um, but generally speaking, non-recurring, so far, we'll see in April, I'm sure, there's about sixty questions on the ballot in April. So we'll have lots more data to help you out with your decision, but generally speaking, non-recurring has a higher pass rate than recurring. Okay, questions about the two options?
My last slide, just real quickly, this, um, thought. And again, maybe explain to somebody, say, but I thought one of the referendum, we had those operations in different towns that they staggered, and I don't remember what that was, but.
I copied and pasted this from the DPI's website, so as accurate as that is, this could be, but.
Oh, yeah, that, a- a- and that's fine. Um, so I guess, well, my whole business, and just to clar- clarify, can you go, I'm adding on to the next thing? Um, were you talking about successive uh referendum, or were you talking about just saying, year one X, year two Y, year three, you know, crap, because you could conceivably structure like a higher amount to get some cash infusion into the fund balance for year one, and then lower to, you know, a serviceable, like, operational referendum to, or five, whatever.
Yep, and we can model all those options out, and we can see that impacts.
I know this is, there's this, you know, you're somewhere answering that question. Do you remember why the district decided to go with five year non-recurring ones for the last several months?
That's a great question, and um I think that uh the answer is, at the time, we're talking about long-term stability. Um, and maybe it was in two thousand fourteen, we considered the underconfidence, we settled in ninety, because it was a consistent number. Uh, but I do remember that we had discussed at some point, um, there's frankly less discussion in two thousand nineteen, and it was a much swifter uh process then, um. But uh, you know, in, in terms of why we changed the numbers, I think that we just try and read the tea leaves and follow our prognosticating. Uh, what we saw would work. There was a lot of change too, and a lot of concern about, you know, the environment, you could grab, so um, there was a lot of give and take. That's must be a little, they should have, of fourteen, obviously.
And I, and I ask because a lot of districts should try to really follow it. Um, it coincide with either the electoral or the electoral election. Um, and again, like I said before, because presidential elections tend to have the highest success rates. And, and then the next one's with the gubernatorial, wishing that was a big success for us here, because the next one, there was like six, but.
He, I, I don't know about, well, and probably, but I know about two thousand fourteen, but I would imagine to your point, that probably was in two thousand thirteen, because now you know, it's, it's up to the election.
Okay, thank you.
So just to look at that graphically, um, this is how a non-recurring exemption looks. Um, the purple is the added exemption. So it comes on in that year one, it stays on the years that it's approved, and then it falls back off. So along with revenue, if it wouldn't get approved, if a new referendum, then would it get approved? Expenses would need to be reduced to balance your budget. Whereas in a recurring exemption, it comes on in the first year as an exemption, and then it um gets calculated into your per pupil amount. So then it's forevermore in that per pupil, we always talk about the revenue limit formula is enrollment times your per pupil amount. It gets built into that per pupil amount, so it raises that, okay? And there's pros and cons to both. Certainly, as you dive down into those questions, if you have questions, we can answer more. Um, this is a, a chart which shows you the past um amounts for recurring and non-recurring. Non-recurring is in the gray for the past couple of years. Um, recurring is in the blue, the cumulative, so recurring is new questions that were asked, new money that was asked in past. Um, but the cumulative of the blue, because it stays in the formula, is three hundred and sixty-six million, so it would be way up top. Um, so this is just to show too that, you know, you're not alone. Um, one big piece of that is Milwaukee's in there in um one of those years, uh, that big blue year. Um, but there's lots of districts across the state that are asking for operational referendums, or that already have an operational referendum. I know you're one of them, right? Um, so we just included some, some charts. As you think about things that you're needing to communicate, what you need to communicate to your community, um, certainly call on your team here, at Bear or at Donovan Group to help you with visuals to show you, you know, why we're asking for this, and that you're not alone. Okay? Um, when we compare non-recurring to uh recurring, we can look at the, the non-recurring pass rate. Um, the blue is passed, the not, uh, the purples is failed. Okay, and the areas of the state, right, is kind of interesting as well. Um, and then here's recurring, it's much less common now, but um you can look at that pass rate as well. Okay, yep.
Just like you're actually doing a breakdown of uh referendum by dollar. I didn't remember the chart, my hand, three point, but um, to, to be able to, sometimes it takes on, you know, if it's ten million dollar referendum. If the dollars.
Make that impact?
Yeah.
So a ten million dollar referendum to a Milwaukee, wouldn't be anything but a ten million dollar referendum, which by then would be a significant one. So we talk about mill rate impact to make it comparable, right? Um, I don't know that we have that chart made up. Do you have anything like that?
No, no, question for.
It is a good question to see. I think, I think we, you know, if I were a board member, I would really pay attention to these April referendums, and especially if someone in the area to say, what is the impact, and we'll have all of those stats. What did they ask for? What was the impact they communicated, right? And then, what, whether or not that's revealed, it would take that place. So definitely pay attention to those things. Okay, so on the shortlist is current cash flow. Todd and Doc's are working on um the current budget, which will inform the cash flow. Kevin will be here at the next meeting, hopefully with updated numbers for you. Um, at least with the timeline of what that one thirty-eight borrow looks like. Um, and then Perry is working alongside you to develop your community survey. Questions that you have for Kevin, please send them to us. Questions that you want to be included in the survey, are you open?
Most certainly, well, but, and again, like, I, I, I appreciate Kevin always saying it that way, but uh, the fact better is, is that regardless, if, again, decision, but I'm sure Neil would say the same thing, which is that come early March, he would have a first draft, or if that's, you know, and again, that's the timeline that's changing, you're gonna need to go, so. And we've already got a first draft written. Now it's just another banding numbers and finding out and adding that together.
So we talk a lot about surveying, and it's, we're talking about the people, um, but then so one other, I think one other reason is why our bell rate is lower is because we have a lot of businesses in Glendale, so we serve it businesses, but because I mean, they're, they're probably accessing. Well, I mean, they may not, unless they live in Glendale, then they could both, but um, it's like can we do any information gathering from them, or is that just not a, I mean, it's, it's okay if they ask us, no, it just.
No, Ben, I appreciate you asking. I, I, I think, again, we could, what I would encourage you to do it on East Merritt as an example, because we just did a childcare survey. And they were really curious about their, the, the people who work in their businesses, who many times live in the economy, Michigan, or some of the other smaller cities near Merritt, so they went out and asked the businesses, would you be willing to share the survey? In this case, they were actually wanting to share with the employees, hopes that those people might open up all their students in the survey. But, but it would be a case of particularly because if they don't live in Glendale, they wouldn't get the survey. You know, sharing that with the business owners and saying, we'd still like you to take the survey, we can add a question, question or two, and advise their business owner just to get their, to get their results that they would have in terms of their, they would charge a substantial tax impact on, on that end of dollar, so.
And I would add that, I'm sure Alison will have on her list, you know, Rotary, probably Chief of Commerce, those types of business organizations that she'll go to and speak to them as well to get, um, some feedback in person. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Yeah, I think the second point was, yeah, I would add. Do you have anything additional for certain budget updates? And then Doc's I had reached out to you about monthly budget reports and how that might look moving forward.
Yeah, so.
And shared a little bit.
Yeah, we will, um, I have always done monthly budget reports, uh, part of it will be now to, uh, uh, as we get, as we get more accurate numbers on the expenditures for this year, it'll be easier to, you know, be able to give you a report. I usually did uh actual the budget this year, but what I've found over the years is that doesn't matter what the budget is, spending habits of districts can be somewhat similar, and so I believe uh percentage I'll compare a percentage of budget spent here versus you know, what I have found in other districts and stuff, and, and there's usually a range that they should be in, so that we'll be able to see where we fall there, uh, although, yeah, the budget won't be the greatest here, but we'll give you we'll give you some of some updates of where we're at. And we'll begin that, 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 we'll begin that the last meeting in March.
The last.
Then, but then we'll start moving to the first meeting, but only because March right now, before I leave here, March got filled with a bunch.
Oh, right, right.
With a bunch of saying, so.
Right.
And it gives us a chance to get more accurate numbers of where we are, so that my budget for it will be all right.
And that's just to clarify, that's not to suggest there would be an update in the meantime, it's just that it would be your first actual budget report that we would realistically expect typically from a business manager.
Yes, yeah, it would, that would become a, that should become a monthly.
Yeah.
Um, I'm assuming that, I'm assuming that monthly, thank you for.
It was.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was sorry, uh, but no, that would be part of, again, part of how we're
Yeah.
going to move everyone forward to be able to avoid these issues.
Yep, okay. So last part of your report, do you guys wanna share? It's your, you said, I have a question about. Um, just a big thank you to Kelly and Jennica who pivoted last week and provided opportunities for staff to provide feedback during our PD day. And I know that some things in Board Docs, um, but.
Sure. Um, after some discussion with school board members and agreement from district leadership, we did really feel that it was important to engage our school district staff in some discussions about the budget. And uh, I will admit it was very difficult to do that um, without having any solid facts um to present to staff. Um, but also felt that it was important to validate what people are feeling and experiencing and wondering. Um, and use it as an opportunity to engage in some discussion, but also collect their feedback. So some of the things we asked for um was for them to review the drafted board resolution and offer their feedback of suggestions. Um, to offer any cost bussing or efficiency suggestions, and to share any specific questions staff had about the budgeting process. I will also admit that it feels very uncomfortable to summarize that information, because there's a lot. And I don't want anybody to feel that their questions or concerns or ideas have been misrepresented at all. Um, so we came to the agreement to share that hard data with all of you. So the school board has that, and that is also available to the public on Board Docs. Um, some of the themes we noticed is that staff tends to agree uh that budget decisions, with, with the board resolution, that the budget decisions need to be driven to the greatest extent possible. Uh, there are concerns, however, about the use of data. For example, what data and how it would be used. Um, specifically expressing some concerns with student data impacting teacher pay or teacher contracts, concerns about how that data would be used. Um, some of the questions that arose about the budget, uh, people are looking for confirmation that cash flow for the remainder of uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to cover their contracts or their pay, uh, is in place. They're looking for a timeline and a process for their contracts, so many are seeking specific information about if there are gonna be any potential cuts to retirement benefits, salaries, and when they would hear of any changes in order to make informed decisions. There is a desire to see a healthy budgeting process developed in the district, including timelines, workflow, roles, responsibilities, as well as accountability measures. People would like to know what happened or what went wrong that led to our current budget situation. The staff is looking for clarity on communication flow. They wanna know who will be providing the staff with ongoing updates on the budget as well as any updates related to change that, because of the projected deficit. Um, it appears that staff has a preference for in-person dates, just based on the feedback sessions um, on the in-person feedback session, and also with the people's form. Um, on the in-person feedback session and also with the people's form responses. Um, and they'd like to know who will be taking lead on that communication forward. And I will not summarize the cost saving suggestions because there were many of them and lots of really, really good ideas that are in the eyes. Of everyone or for everyone to see. And then also, um, many staff member had, members had specific communication for the school board, which you also have.
Yeah, um. So I, yes, I want to say thank you to all the staff for participating and collaborating. Um. Carla and I were able to come in and talk to you guys on Friday. Um, and the goal of that was to just let you know what we know, which as we continue to hear is not a lot and it's frustrating. And to sort of just empathize with that, but also to. Be as transparent as possible about that. Um, it is our goal to let you know what we know, when we know it. That's, I, I mean, that's just, that's, um.
Danielle, I would actually say it has been our practice.
Thank you.
It has been our active practice. I mean, literally, you guys, you know what we know.
That's true.
Here and we don't know what's about to be said. That's true. Find out when we find out. Yes, so.
Thank you. Um. So, and I know that organically what came from that is that there was communication that was to be presented directly to the school board. What I've done, and just to humor me, is I have, I've gone through it. Uh, granted, there's a lot of good information in terms of. Uh, budget suggestions, questions, and the thing I hope I made clear that I'm just gonna keep saying is that. The school board's role is not to be in the weeds of the budget. It is not, we are not deciding what staff. Or would might be cut or where those cuts are gonna be made. As Gus said, building leaders and, and, you know, know best. What their building budgets should be looking like. The reason we want to engage staff and teachers is because you know best what your classrooms are like and what your students need. And that's why it's really important that you guys are, feel comfortable and safe to engage with administrators. Because they are the ones making those decisions. They're going to bring us their proposals. And we're going to ask if they followed our process and our guidelines and did they think about this and did they talk to you about, you know? That, that's our role. So I understand that there is this preference for. Board members to be present for some of these conversations. There's also a preference for us not to be there from various people. So we get. Cut that contradictory opinion and we just have to make decisions about. What, what our role is and what it should be. Um, the reason we made this information transparent is, is because. Um, our administrators and leaders are gonna look through those suggestions and we also get to see them and we get to see if they've been utilized or not. Maybe we can ask why are we not, but it's not gonna be our decision ultimately to, to, to get into the weeds like that. Um. I will also say that we are five people who have been elected by the community who have full-time obligations and jobs. And I've been, and. I want to be in the buildings as much as possible and we want to be as accessible as possible. Um. And if it's not through a board meeting, if it's not when we're in the building or because we can't be there or you can't be at a board meeting. I do believe we all make ourselves accessible by email or phone and always return those calls. I always want to engage, so I just hope that that's also apparent. So, um, you had the specific slide with some of the questions and will you pull up the, um. Communication directly to this board, not have your slide presentation?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay.
A moment.
Uh, and you guys can feel free to chime in. My hope would be that, um, I might be able to kind of memorialize some of this to share out with staff who aren't here. But I just wanted to like validate that you guys had these questions and these, um, comments directly for the board and I thought, yeah, oh, sorry.
Are we allowed to speak at this time?
Yeah, so, oh, yes.
Related to this topic.
Yes, we can allow visitor participation on this. Could I, once we're done with the, oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I just wanted to address a few things. So there were some comments about closed sessions and our board meetings being hard to attend. Which I have empathy for. Um, we actually have been thinking about that. This closed session has been moved to the end, so that was something that was good feedback to hear. Um, there were comments about how long closed sessions take and unfortunately. We ju, we don't move into closed session lightly and we don't know how long they're going to take. They are items we cannot discuss in public. Generally around specific students, employees, certain situations and. We want to have efficient meetings as much as everybody else. So that's just, you know, that's just part of it. There was a question about parents, um, related to PD days and daycare, and I wasn't quite sure if that question was about. Parents as it's staff or parents, or if it's about related to PD days in our community, but we will be talking about PD days. I believe in March, is that right? So that is worth a discussion from, from both sides. Um, there was a question about cash flow you heard tonight. It sounds like it's not August, it might be June. Um, but short-term borrowing, we're looking at all our options to cover those gaps and you know the timelines for those, so we're gonna make sure we cover those gaps.
Yeah, yeah, just to be clear, we have financial experts on board who are ensuring that everything is going to be dealt with, right? Like, there's not a question of if, it's a question of how.
Exactly. And, and that's also the piece is the administrators are working closely with our financial consultants and experts. Um. Uh, we are not financial experts. We are relying on expertise, um, in-house, right? To help guide us, uh, while we provide oversight and see an oversee process. Um. There was a question around, right, difficulties. So I'd love to brainstorm with staff and the board around. Difficulty, uh, for staff engagement and attending board meetings. Um, we want that engagement. So, you know, we offer this live stream, we offer this, if, if there are better times. Uh, if there are better ways to engage the staff, like we are, I, we are open and, and want to discuss that. For a time I created board updates, it was like three months where I tried to create board updates to summarize what happens at these meetings and it was such an intense task. That I, I had to stop. Um, but I know that that is, could have been a help, could be a really helpful thing, but it's just not something. That I have the personal capacity for, but it's something to think about and if someone could fill that role. Um. And there were some questions that I think are better for Todd and Gus around budget info and when we get contracts. Um, and I think it's obvious we don't know about the extent of our budget reduction needs that's going to need to happen, um, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can say to staff, Wisconsin Banshee says that every school district must issue contracts by May fifteenth. There is, there is no exception of that, and that's the way it's been the last couple of years. So will that occur? Yes, that will, that will occur. And if there has to be any other process that has to be involved, that may need to be. Dealt with before May fifteenth, we'll follow statute on, on that when it comes to, well, less than others.
Yeah.
Of course, if we gotta do reductions, they gotta be done prior. They have to be approved prior to May fifteen. And so, yeah, the statutory thing is there. Where, and there are no exceptions to the statute statutes. Uh, so regardless of where we're at, we'll have to. We will have to follow those, those guidelines.
Yeah.
And if you've heard us say, the other thing is. My forty-two years of education. Prior to retiring, I never had, I never, uh, we never had a payroll issue. Those forty-two years have not started a payroll issue now that I'm post-retired. We will, and again, as you were gonna say earlier, we're gonna start tomorrow, I'm gonna start checking and calculating payrolls and fringe it and see how much we need to have. On cash to make sure, I mean, I, I would tell staff that, yes. That. I give you a ninety-nine point nine percent guarantee because there's always something that Sunday I would never think of that mighty group, but basically, yes, almost virtually a hundred percent that staff is gonna be paid. This year, we'll finger away. We will do what we have to do, patient. So I think those are the two things that, for those staff people that are here. So they can go back and pass on to others that, yes, everyone will get paid. And we will, and we will follow the statutes and, and everyone will know on May fifteen. They'll, you'll have a contract, getting a contract for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, um, there was a suggestion about will there be a timeline for communications and. I, that would be a great idea. I mean, we've created some documents now like a budget calendar and I think that incorporating communications out to staff. When help would make sense. The board wants to revisit our budget policies and financial policies. Even though some of them were just recently passed as we move through this process and beyond to incorporate what we learned. Um, so definitely open to, to thinking about that. Um, please keep up these sessions and updates as the goal. The goal is to continue to engage. That was a first step and, um. That was a first step. So I think at Cal, I think I'd also like to continue discussing, uh, ways around engagement, staff engagement, uh. You know. Things like that. Um, there was a question about not hearing from our superintendent. Is this board-driven? The answer is no. Um, Allison's free to communicate and lead as she wants to and she can speak to that. Um. If she wants to. Um.
I was just gonna say, adding on to what, adding on to what you were talking about, we met as a leadership team today. Um, we meet with Todd and Gus tomorrow. We talked about creating a communication of a go-out weekly. Um, so that we can provide some timelines, some updates, some process, so that staff know what we're currently working on, what we know, what's coming next. And then we've already started talking about the March first professional development day, um, because, uh. We'll have some flexibility in that schedule to offer some drop-in sessions so that, um, Kelly, Jenica and I. And building admin if they want, we haven't really flushed it out, but we just talked about the fact that that's another really good opportunity. To have more, another drop-in session for staff to be able to provide more feedback. So kind of already putting some of that into the works. Uh, we're hoping that first communication will come out Friday, because we'll have a chance, we had this, we had this meeting. So we can summarize for people that weren't here or didn't watch or didn't get the information from Baird or the updates. And then we can also talk about the meeting we have tomorrow with Todd and Gus, be able to share that out on Friday with staff. So those are just a couple of quick next steps that we talked about.
Um, can salaries be reduced or frozen? I believe that's a question for Gus, but I believe it's both. As a, as a potential option for going forward for staff or administrators, et cetera. I mean. Essentially, everything is on the table at this point because we don't have information to rule anything out. I think that's just the hard truth. That sucks. Um, okay, let's see, so getting through, there's a few more. What is the role of treasurer on the board, our budget and funding? That is a great, great question. Um, in some districts, the treasurer meets with the business manager prior to each board meeting to go over financials. One thing coming up on our agenda tonight is a financial policy. I'm asking to revise the language of where our board treasurer would receive the, um. Monthly detailed purchase card reports, be able to have that. So there's another set of eyes on that and some accountability. Um, they also, yeah, so, so right now with the committee of the whole and with the treasurer role. Um, I think that's something we can look to Gus and Todd for, um, guided design. How to, how to make that role, um, more instrumental if, if we need to. Review the budget monthly. Yes, we're trying to do that. We wanted to do that, we're trying to do that. Um, soon as we get numbers, that is going, that's best practice. That's what we're going to do. Is the board looking for best practices on healthy budgets? Yes, we are. We are reading books. We are speaking to our experts. We're learning as much as we can. We have to make decisions if we want to get this right. That means, you know, we are accountable with the decisions we make. So personally, I would say. Trying to learn as much as I can, as fast as I can. Um, I'm all about process and policy. Those are the places where you'll see me. So, okay, and then the last thing was just, I guess, I guess more comments about. The board being present in the schools or in these drop-in sessions. And I'll just say we're open to your ideas on engagement there. Um. Our employee is Allison, the superintendent. She manages the day-to-day of the district, including finances and communication. It's not our role to micromanage. We set the policy, we provide oversight. Um. Carla has been saying you wouldn't want a board member to come into your classroom and, and tell you how your desk should be arranged or your. You know, what you can say to your students for beta, uh, and we don't want to step into that unless we have to. So this budget crisis that we face is all hands up deck and we're stepping in as much as necessary. Um, but we're relying on our administrators and, um, our experts in this time to guide us. I think that's, that's it. Yeah, please.
Um, Gus, you talked about contracts for teachers. Um, what about the support staff? Is, support staff doesn't get contracts? When would they hear?
Um, I, to be, to be honest with you, I'd have to go back and see what your, I would tend to try to follow whatever your past practice was. Uh, I'm always speaking on, on.
I got laid off every summer, first five years I worked here.
I mean, in my previous experience, I will only talk about my previous experience back when I was. Already retired, uh, and my district support staff was notified, teachers were notified May fifteenth, uh, sometimes support staff, depending upon. Budget year, sometimes they were notified May first, sometimes they're notified June first, but my intention would be is that everyone's being notified before the end of school year. That would be, that's my, that's my target.
Thank you. And I will say there were a lot of amazing questions and suggestions that are, I mean, these were all compiled on Monday. Um, at the public event, so our administrators or leaders, they will be looking at this, our, our financial experts. Uh, and I think we'll keep continuing to address whatever questions and concerns we can. At meetings, so March Cal, I would see us possibly talking through some of these things that they might determine they can answer once they've had time to process. Yeah.
Danielle, so one of the things that has come up, uh, from a variety of, sorry, I don't mean to suggest from you guys. But from a variety of people is that there is a policy in place that has very strict definition of the flow of communication. And so.
Chain of command.
A chain of command. And so within this, the structure at the moment. If there are concerns that people feel like they need to bring to the board or have a private conversation with the board. Is there a way to communicate an assurity that that's okay? Like this is a particular moment. Is it reasonable for us to say to people like. In this particular moment of time, if you feel like you need to seek this out, or would that be overstepping? That I just not sure, like people are seeking this out. I'm not sure how we can provide that to them.
I, I will let Allison land on that. I will say that. We've never been able to control what people bring to us and I've always asked for people to engage and. And, and reach out, you know, but I will limit what I could say or do. Um, with that information because of this sort of chain of command and because of other implications of having information about conflict or things. That can come before the board. Um, but I think that's, I don't know, something worth discussing in terms of like. There was a theme, you know, of not feeling comfortable necessarily always saying what you want. I guess to that point though. It's still really important for us to have difficult conversations with administrators and administrators to have those with staff and all of us to be able to do that. The same way we would ask our students to, to do that, right? Like to, to engage in difficult conversations, so. It's, it's best to think about the issue and who is best to deal with that issue. But I, I understand what you're saying and I don't know in terms of chain of command, like, you know, it's not my favorite. It's never been my favorite, but I know that it's.
Yeah, okay, I, I'm sorry. I, I want to speak out of turn as something of, of less relevance, uh, in a couple of months. So maybe bring me up to say something which that I have, uh, the unfortunate at times benefit of experience dealing with the situation. That you're talking about, uh, and. And I'm using my.
Thank you.
I have the unfortunate benefit of experiencing situations that you're speaking. We've had, uh, exceptional, uh, occasions over time where people come to us. There are people, you know, don't know about the chain of command, uh, policy. There are people with legitimate concerns and they don't feel they can go through the chain of command. But ultimately, we are elected by the community and we are responsible to the community. And I believe that in those rare cases where, uh, someone has to come to us, we have an obligation to engage. The electorate and the people that we serve. Now, I think that within the confines of the policy, when someone comes to us and they say, I have a problem. Or I can't do this, or I can't do that, we have an obligation to at least make good faith effort to, you know, support, uh, the people, maybe the target of, you know, uh. Uh, of, of, of that concern, to encourage use and to find out the process, uh, and to help, uh, be a. Uh, a guide in. Uh, and to help uh be a, uh, a guide in getting something resolved or to deal with it ourselves on a policy level where we can deal with it potentially. But uh, I think that your instincts are spot on. You don't just engage, you don't cut all people you acknowledge are concerned, listen. And frankly, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, you know, that is something that's way on your mind, that you're trying to deal with it. Because whoever comes into this board this uh time has to be ultimately responsive. And uh, I've tried to do that and live by that. I'm not perfect. None of us are perfect, by the way. But right now, we all, we all five of us, obviously, live in this community. We are experiencing the same thing from a different perspective than staff. Okay, uh, i- i- it's, it's not a spitting contest, but we are, you know, dealing with the same situation. We are affected by it. We are uh challenged by it and we are trying to work through it as well. And so you may not see that we have the same level of appreciation as the very palpable fear of losing a job or the concern, which I hope Gus addressed about, you know, not making payroll. Uh, I, I know that your concerns are different, in some cases more severe, right? But um your success, your livelihood weighs on each of us in a way that uh I, I think they wanted to. Uh, that we take it very seriously. And so we will always be, and I'm I mean, I'll, I'll speak for the board. I think each, I, I think each and every one of us on the board will take the time to listen and to engage and frankly doing that since this began. And uh, uh, I, I think that we have seen some great actions by uh individual board members and leadership there. It is tough not having anyone on the back. I'm saying we're here, we're fit to work in with. And uh, so that's my take.
All I, all I was gonna add, if I might, sorry.
No, no, please.
A lot of talking.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, for the, for the staff, I would let you know. Uh, I've only been here a couple of weeks and right now because of my schedule, it's only been a day a week or so. And so I, so I've only had two or three meetings with the building administrators. I will tell you that your building, I am very impressed with your building administrators. They are bringing if you must have been saying things to your building administrators because when we have those meetings, they bring, they have lists of questions and concerns that they're hearing from staff. I would tell you that you certainly could, if you have concerns or whatever, I would certainly recommend that you talk to your building administrator and make sure that they're aware of it because they are certainly carrying the message to me. Uh, and I'm hearing exactly, you know, what the concerns are. Uh, and I think some of, some of the things that you've seen may not be as much as you want, but right now, some of the things that you've seen last week and stuff like that were, were in response to concerns that you've had and they have been made, at least no one to, certainly to me, in the same term position. And I'm certainly, you know, I'm certainly cognizant of, of those concerns and what we can try to do to relieve them. So I would just tell you that your building administrators are doing an excellent job on your behalf for advocating for you.
Allison, any other? Yeah, please.
Just be appropriate.
Yeah, this, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. Yeah, please.
Nine o'clock.
Mine is short.
No, 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 I don't. Do not rush. I'm just, yeah.
And anybody else?
Yeah, type it deep.
All right, Amy Lingard, um, physical education teacher at Artway, also building rep for the association at Artway. And first of all, I do want to thank the board and our administrators. I feel like you all are very open door, very accessible for us to talk to and to ask questions. You're asking for our feedback and I think it's, it's helped a lot of us, I think, feel positive in a negative situation. Um, but my specific question is about busing. I know we spend a ton of money on busing. I briefly put it in, in one of my feedbacks, but I didn't know how to word it. So after thinking more clearly about it, I know legally we have to have busing, correct? Because of our busy streets. But what I'm wondering is, is are you aware that on some buses, we have six kids? Are you aware that many families are routed on a bus but do not utilize the bus service? And so I feel like we're paying for ten buses a day. Could we cut that in half and make our bus routes for kids? Could we contact our family members? I know other districts, like you have to have a deadline to sign up for the bus ride. And if you don't meet that deadline, you're not routed. So could we implement that? Um, could there be certain neighborhoods that are accessible by walking that wouldn't get routed? That don't have to cross the business street? So those are just three things that I came up with that I don't know the answers to. So I just thought that I would share them. And then secondly, um, I know we all want to keep all of our staff. I've heard a lot about the contract deadline. Are we still following the April fifteenth on renewal?
Yes.
Deadline?
That's a stat.
Okay.
You don't have a choice.
Okay, um, there are certain people that have come to me as a building rep, wondering if that could be moved up out of respect, because a lot of the jobs start getting posted already in March for certain districts. And I know there are some people who have come to me. This isn't my personal question. Uh, but as a rep, would there be any possibility of people being told sooner? Uh, so that they can start moving forward if needed to apply at the first jobs that start knocking open.
That's a good question. And I don't know that we can answer that right now, but I guess I would.
You know, you know, if you're about something like that is if you're if you don't have great information, you're gonna end up probably putting more people on that layoff list than you need and then you lose good people that way. So uh, there has to be a balance somewhere. Well, yeah, you want to let people know as soon as you can, but you don't want to be in a situation where your, 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 your your potential layoff list is bigger than it needs to be. So.
Makes great sense. Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'll certainly take that into consideration as we're, as we're going forward. And you've heard one of the things that, that I intend to do, it's gonna happen, is that we'll have that discussion prior to the actual action so that there is time for questioning. You know, you've heard the board say, how did we do with procedure? How did we do that? Stuff like that. So we, there's, there's a little timing thing there, but we'll see exactly where we are. I mean, I understand, I understand the concern and I certainly acknowledge that. And if I can accommodate decide that we can accommodate that, we'll try to accommodate that. That one, I, I guarantee you're gonna get paid. I can't guarantee that that will happen before April fifteenth, but I, but I hear you.
Thank you. Um, we are looking at the NATC contract um and renegotiating with RightWay. And some of the things you've talked about are, are part of that discussion. Walking to spots, consolidating, like different cluster times. All kinds of things are, are on the table for that discussion. So we'll try to be updated when that comes through too. Thank you.
But, but to be clear, Amy, those, that includes like a sheriff study, like that would be a couple of years.
Yeah, some of that stuff says some of that stuff can't be immediate, but there's other things.
Right, or we ask questions about time. I mean, I don't fully understand the timing, but those are all.
And, and I don't know how it works in other districts, but I know that there are busing deadlines. And if you don't sign up for a bus, you don't get routed. And just that alone, I think, might help.
We don't have a deadline now.
Yeah, I know.
It's like rolling.
Actually, we, in the past, we would send a survey out every spring.
Right.
And we would send all of those individual sheets. That way we didn't route everybody. The last couple of years, from what I understand, we get route RightWay every single one of our addresses. That way we knew which kids were walking, which kids were riding. We have a deadline of, and the, um, the office secretaries would know, but I think that was when Borna and Laura were both still here. We had a deadline. We had to give the, the changes to RightWay before school started. If we didn't have them by that date, the kids couldn't be on a bus. And then it would, it takes a week now for us to get any changes that we need to approve with RightWay. We, we tell any families and call and say we need to change. You gotta give us a week as far as to us too.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, no, Amy. I'm sorry.
It's good. Angela McGlyer, second grade teacher at Artway School, also a Glendale resident at five-three-one West Fairfield Court. Um, a few things that I want to bring up. Um, first of all, the staff survey that did go out last Friday and closed on Monday. Um, I would ask that the survey opens up again. Um, I know many people, including myself, did not find the time to fill out that survey um, on such a short deadline and uh so much to get done on Friday and Monday. Um, so I would ask that that opens back up so most more staff can participate. Um, I'm also asking, I know we have talked about it through emails before. I'm asking if it would be possible to do a face-to-face town hall style meeting with the staff in person, face-to-face. Um, possibly during contracted hours, uh, possibly during like a three oh five meeting, like we do our staff meetings. Or possibly on a professional development day. We typically have uh, two to four P M. At the end of every professional development day in our own classrooms or with our teams to collaborate. Um, that would be a, a, a good time. I think they'd be more likely to get staff feedback uh during those times. Um, I know you are asking.
Sorry, that's with the board. That's what you're saying? People are at town hall?
Yes.
With the board.
Yes. I know you're asking us to um communicate more directly with our administrators. Um, I know that some staff um are feeling a little uncomfortable with that. Uh, myself included perhaps. Um, there are some things we perhaps disagree on. And again, the potential for retaliation is a possibility. Uh, I think people worry about that. People have a lot of worries. Staff has, has a lot of worries. Um, again, I wanted to reiterate what Amy just spoke of. I would say have that on my list as well. Um, if possible, to um make the April fifteenth deadline for um letting staff know if they're not going to be renewed, if their contracts would not be renewed. That's a really hard time, not enough time for staff to go out and find new jobs if they're going to be losing their current jobs. Um, something that was just mentioned, and I'm trying to remember who had just said it, but um, that there is potential that salaries could be reduced. Um, I remember when we were going through the market value adjustment discussions year and a half, two years ago, um, that it was stated that salaries could not go down. So I'm a little surprised to hear that that's, that that is potentially possible. A little surprised to hear that. Um, so I guess I'd like clarification on that. Um, and I assume we would get our contract amounts in our May fifteenth contracts that have to come out by May fifteenth. Next. Um, I wanted to bring up one of the comments that Kelly read um that came through one of the staff surveys about student data affecting staff pay. Um, I noticed a couple of you shaking your heads no. Um, but however.
No, that's a mess. I think people are reading the guiding principles uh wrong.
Well, that's, that may be the case, but um, myself included and others um are feeling uncomfortable with the fact that um our uh mission statements and now our SLOs that we have to write three times a year have to state that one hundred percent of our students will be proficient in our essential standards. I know in past years, and you know, this is my first year back in second grade in eight years. Um, in, when I was in second grade years ago, um, when we wrote our SLOs, the percentage was uh eighty percent. We were, we were asked, we were, we wrote down eighty percent of our students will be proficient by the end of second grade in whatever uh standard we were focused on. Uh, we're now asked to write one hundred percent. I'm personally not comfortable with that. Um, to me, again, that goes back to is the fact that, you know, um, that i- if we don't meet that, is that gonna somehow affect our job security? Um, and it's actually been joked about a couple of times. Um, and
Joked about.
Um, I'm not comfortable saying so right at this moment.
Are you speaking about?
Um, I believe one hundred percent proficiency in our essential standards is not realistic. Um, and I did bring that up during one of my uh PLT meetings, not PLTs, I'm sorry, SLO meetings, so many acronyms. Um, one of my SLO meetings and um it was told to me that, oh, no, no, we actually expect one hundred percent growth. And that's reasonable. And to me, that's what I would prefer to write as my SLO. I, we will see one hundred percent growth in our essential standards. One hundred percent proficiency is very comfortable for me to write as a, an educator.
Sorry, you made that suggestion too.
Yes. Um, and then, so that's, that was everything I wanted to say in terms of being a staff member. Now, in terms of being a um community member and a taxpayer in Glendale, I wanted to talk a little bit more about the operational referendum. And some of these slides that Kim and Perry showed earlier, uh, that we have had operational referendums. Um, April two thousand eight, April two thousand eleven, November two thousand fourteen, April twenty nineteen. Um, we are currently in the third year of a five-year referendum. Is that correct? We are in the fourth year of a five-year, five-year.
Next year is the last year.
Next year is the last year. So we're in the fourth year. Okay. And it, it was one point five million per year, so seven point five total.
Yep.
By the time.
Yep.
Okay. And for any, were those all operational referendums?
Yes, there was one, I think, that was a one-time cap. But everything else.
But the last one was different. Um, it was uh non-recurring for, it was for non-recurring purposes. One before it was for programming and yeah, and maybe something else. I might have to look it up.
But again, they had different, okay, uh, stated purposes. Um, just like you stated, I am not a financial expert, so I'm trying to wrap my head around a lot of these things. Um, when we had those referendums passed, were we in a budget crisis during any of those years?
Well, it'd be nice and uh trying to play them that short answer, yes, uh, but it was a different kind of budget crisis. The short answer is yes, but it was a different kind of budget crisis, right? Um, the issue had become over time that a revenue that could not keep going, uh, the growth, that they were taking over the CPI, that weren't able to same level that it needs or increasing. They made a lot of cuts along the way. Um, and yet the ourselves, it's so shy of revenue. That's why we went to help advance personal front at various times. And as you can see, you know, they increased in dollar amount, you know, by certain five days. Uh, the last one was a billion a year in nineteen ninety.
Six hundred and ninety.
And, and so, uh, and, and they have gone up. And and they have gone up. And and now. The compromise that we had at that time, unfortunately, it's it's. It's true, but it's also not. Always best to maintain the same services or expand. And so the goal had been to maintain the level of services. But providing all along by going to a friend of mine. And so at each interval, administration.
Okay, I can I add, I in sort of researching and and learning about this more and more. Maybe it was, it was when Rosie was here, but there was a five year forecast. That at that time shows you that our fund balance is going to start to drop off right around now. And the next year and the next year, and that was, you know, at the time, not knowing about COVID and all these other things, but so. That part of our narrative is not unique. You know, the unique part of our narrative is that we weren't able to see this coming. Because we didn't have appropriate checks balances, you know, in the finance that we did, we had a. I don't know what to say, I don't want to, so because there are significant accounting errors, significant. Revenue projections and all of those things that we were relying on. That's why, you know, we were surprised by our deficit in October and then surprised again by it being larger than it was. So part of this was and couldn't be anticipated and and then there's a significant part. That we weren't able to deal with in time, right? And now we're sort of scrambling. So I don't know if that if that helps at all, but I mean. That part of our story is not. Right, right. And we're gonna, we're gonna pull out of that and we're going to be proactive in all the ways, but.
So. We have one more year on the current referendum. But we are talking about. Adding another referendum, doubling up that one year. And that is because of the budget crisis we are in.
It's because of our, our.
Well, they also talked about, they also talked about subtracting up from first year. So if we were gonna have five million each year, then the first year, it's also possible to do three, like five million.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think we can say exactly.
But we have, we have no idea.
What we're gonna.
What we're gonna do yet.
We don't know that.
Cause.
I I I did catch that, but.
Yeah, we don't know the amount and.
Right.
I don't know, there's a world in which we find that our revenue and expenditures look nothing like. What the numbers are we were given. You can read their faces and see if that's, I don't know, but but that's the scenario in which maybe we don't have, you know. But then you look at making cuts, what would you rather do? So that's the thing.
I, the last thing I want to ask, however, is will. So the survey for the community is going to go out in the next, on their two.
The timeline for a community survey would be.
Yeah, May.
For six and maybe so a little bit before then.
Okay, so that makes a couple ones. Prior to that survey going out, would. Would the information about. The budget, the current budget and the accounting errors that have taken place be communicated with the community?
What would you?
Well, he was, I mean, he was saying that. Usually people want to be surveyed with different levels of. Referendum. So I'm assuming we'll have a better picture, but I don't know specifically.
Well, my understanding of a survey is part of the survey's purpose is not just to get results, it's to educate your community. That's tell them what your story is. And so there are some people we. Might not even care if they respond to the survey because the whole point of it is to is to educate them about what's going on in our district. I haven't sat down with, you know, we haven't started that process, so I don't know. What that ends up looking like, but I know that they would be talking to. Leadership and board members to try to suss out what that story is and messaging and that that would be. Shared out and sought for, sought feedback would be sought on that messaging and that, like, that's a whole process getting to what does the survey look like? Initially, we had talked about a district wide communication, the families and staff and that sort of fallen off. And it's something to talk about, but it's. You know, everything is is public and not shy now. Talking to our community or people or anyone about it, so. You have to think about the best way to reach them, right? So cost money, already writing this survey, maybe that's how you tell your story. And make yourself available.
I just think, so you say that district wide communication has fallen off, but even. We talk about the people in the district.
That's what I.
Does not. Does not include everybody in the community because there are many.
No, both, right, both of it, exactly. Like an idea of introducing our business manager was talked about. Our former business manager through a community newsletter of sorts. Obviously, there's just a lot of priorities and a lot of time, you know, that's involved in. In these things. We're trying to do the best we can prioritizing.
Just want to make sure the community is hearing everything. Before they fill out a survey.
Yeah, okay. I don't know, you had some other comments earlier. I don't, I don't know. I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to respond to in our comments.
I think so. There are some things that I took just notes on. Because as I talked about, doing a communication to make sure we respond to some of those. Especially a lot of policies around reduction of staff, they clearly like never have any data. Do you know what you're talking about, like student data? So some of those things I was just kind of taking notes. Hopefully communicate that out to everybody because if you're not feeling like that, then it's important to really hear. Round intentions, so.
Yeah, and I think communicating out about this idea around. Our leader's ability to have hard conversations and retaliation. I don't know if that means you guys engaging that more directly to to have those conversations, or I don't know what that looks like, but I feel like.
It did take some. And I think it's important to clarify that too, because I feel like the intent of that was like, if something is. You're having a problem, a conflict in your building, just like I would, if a parent calls me, I'm gonna say, did you talk to the teacher? That's different than what we're talking about right now and being able to just share feedback. In a, in a safe space, so I think. So I want to try to clarify that too, because I think chain of command was put in place for a very different reason and it was just. So the person's having an issue with you, go to you first, try to resolve it before, but that feels very different all the time. So I did take some notes on that too.
Okay, I appreciate.
Thank you.
There is a question from a community member. It's okay, okay.
How many community members do we have online?
Right now, we have thirty one.
Wow.
And it's, it's kind of buffered between in the thirties and forties the entire time. So Gus Kaufman, a staff member is, and I'll read it directly. Did the board build timelines into Todd Gray and Gus Knitz's contracts? Who will hold them accountable for meeting them? Their work is appreciated, but we are concerned about April fifteenth being the timeline for teachers as previously stated by others.
Well, we do have a contract. Or approved a contract for us. That's three days a week. We're meeting with him tomorrow. We're hoping to map out some of those timelines. I did take notes on the April fifteenth, and I know that Gus heard that too. That if there's any way recognized that it's important, you can know that sooner rather than later. As far as like accountability for hours and stuff, I don't know.
I think the timeline is timeline for completing work.
I I would, I would, I will, I'll see if there's clarification, but I would, I would think like. End timeline, like what is, what is their duration of supporting our district work?
Well, they're hoping that they have things wrapped up by June thirty. I know initially the hope was by June thirty, so that we would have the current situation, since you, you know, through the, and then a good budget built for the next year.
Yeah, I can speak, but certainly my contract, my contract is end June thirty.
And I would just add, ours to like specific timelines about data being provided to us, the complication is that. The job that they're doing is trying to. Develop an understanding of how we got where we are. And so. We want regular updates, but we can't, we can't move faster than they're able to do the job well. Because we want our decisions to be grounded in good information. So that when we move forward, we're standing on incredibly solid ground. So there's no question that how we're making decisions as we move forward, that they're well informed decisions. And so. We all feel the same level of discomfort with the time it's taking, and yet the people we were able to onboard for this. Are exceptionally skilled and have excellent reputations, which is why we were excited to have them. So I don't know if that helps anybody, but we're moving as fast as we can to make the best possible decisions for our district.
Not at, not at this time at least. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's five A.
Yeah, five A board word. Okay, so. Five A, I guess I would entertain a motion. Table this and bring it back to Cal, but I would, but I, my point is. Five A is something Carla Strang has been doing a lot of research around school board, school finance budget. And she drafted these guiding principles, which could be a resolution the board wants to adopt and help guide the process. Make sure we're on the same page. We received feedback also from the professional development day and surveys that we can incorporate and so. My suggestion, I think, to have the board members consider that feedback and then come back to March sixth, Cal. To decide on it, if one of them are good or not, give staff members enough time to the survey, offer a feedback.
So it needs to be a motion.
No, well, we can have discussions inside, but the motion should be.
I think if staff worked and have opportunity to provide feedback, that would make sense.
Yeah, there is a bit of like feedback, but I think there's also a bit about people asking. Do you want to make a motion?
Well, it's a discussion.
Are we discussing it? Discussing it.
We think, I mean, look, it's future agenda. But I I I mean.
Yeah, okay. And I don't know if anyone here has comments on it.
So I would comment this, I, what I appreciate about the guiding principles is that I think it might help clarify for our community. What our school board role truly is compared to the work that's done by the trained leadership of the district. Who understand what actually needs to be done and who can bring to us informed ideas and proposals.
Right.
Because I I do have a sense from some of the feedback that there's a misunderstanding of the full of the board. And I, and I want there to be a clear understanding of what everybody's roles are and what they're empowered to do. So I do appreciate that, that part of this.
I I just like to add, you know, and that when McCourt just said. Look, I'll be frank, I mean, I was worried that having this is just something for us to spin our wheels on while we're trying to get. Yes, but there's a real value in communicating what our perspective is. And certainly listening to comments and for people tonight, as well as looking at the feedback service so far. Which will also be real in some places. I I I think that it it's important to. To have this document or some version of it, and it does beat something to be talking to. As well as number six, which is to consider non-staffing. For example. The other thing is that I think it sets a tone. And I did want to comment just one thing, because just to clarify what I had to Todd at our last meeting. I I I was trying to be cagey, make sure that there was no evidence of intentional wrongdoing, which. In my understanding, the answer is no, but. I'm under the impression that some people might inadvertently suggested that I was looking, you know, for accountability. And I'm not, I'm looking for moving forward, making, you know, quite changes, you know, to make sure this doesn't happen again, understanding what we're doing. So, you know, I I don't think anyone's looking, you know, back repeated measures that really. Forward, I think this document really captures that.
Well, it's a document we can utilize for future budgets that could change and evolve as well to document a lot of districts' needs in budgeting. And so the hope in developing it now is is to try to have something to utilize for this process. Might not be perfect and it's it's goals, but it'll help guide our discussion when proposals are brought to us too, is the way I see it. Right, as a board, we'll be able to utilize these principles and ask questions about them, about the decisions we're being asked to be made. Yep, okay, further discussion? Hey, we are moving on to policy second reading.
I'd like to make a motion that we take a short break.
Yeah, five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, sorry, motion?
Five minutes.
I know, I didn't want to do it, it was just gonna make it longer, but I.
Yes. So, yeah, just let me know if anyone you want me to ask.
Is it related to? Policy second readings or what is it related to a topic, is it on a topic we've already covered?
It's on a topic we just covered.
Do you want to, plus, yeah, let's start with that.
Okay, Jen Clark, staff member is asking for clarification, does the June thirtieth contract end date apply to Todd Gray as well?
No, I don't believe there's an end date in Todd's contract. And then June thirtieth date for Gus. He has told us he will not leave the district in peril. And and you know, so he, I guess, without making sure we have. Our stuff, you know, things in place or somebody in place, and so I think he can be. He, it's not, I don't know that that's, that's his, his goal, but I don't know that that's a fine end all be on team.
Todd doesn't actually have a contract, he's doing it out like tracking hours.
Um, he doesn't, I thought he did. Oh, right, okay, yeah, we proved how, okay.
So he can either end your decade wishing, can we say that clearly, just stay here then?
Oh, Allison, can you clarify?
So Todd is a more of a consultant and he's working hourly, he just decided to pass it so long in the district that I think.
That's a long meeting.
Barely three hours.
From the time this meeting started.
Just for that, I'm not moving table anything.
Okay, so we are on policy second readings. Hi. Um, okay.
Yeah, so the first three policies, thirty one sixty one, thirty four thirty one. And sixty three twenty are adjusted based on feedback from the last. Board meeting and then just checking with Steve to make sure those changes were fine, so those were in the chart. And then the last two are policies that Danielle worked with Steve on to add some additional.
All right, is there? Motion for that for discussion, or do you want to have a little discussion? Somebody want to?
Something recommended proposals.
There's seconds again. All right, discussion. So I, I just have, I have if you look at policy sixty-three, twenty, I did have just a question about this one already changed the number.
From five thousand, from five thousand to twenty-five thousand. I mean, twenty-five thousand.
Two five thousand, right?
And then we added the diversity of purchasing language to the box.
Oh, okay. So for any, I think the word was like item. That we have to seek a bid for anything, any which I'm so sorry. Um, sixty-three, twenty? Oh, okay, okay. Oh, okay. Purchases of more than five thousand dollars for a single item, like item? When I'm thinking, I'm trying to just wrap my head around what that is. Is item like, is that a curriculum? Is that like something tangible? Like what?
Well, I just, I remember the reason we moved it up, I think, because I think we recently moved it up was because if you have to buy a bunch of like toilet paper, you know, it could cost a lot of money, right? And I think that if I, if I'm remembering this correctly, that's what if, maybe it was Jim at the time, I don't know. But so an item would just be like, I think, I mean, maybe we should say a single purchase.
Well, that's what I was curious about because I'm.
Well, no, but see, you could also buy multiple things at once. I, I yeah.
So that was that language I didn't, I don't know if I understand it properly, but I, now that I think this is not here, it might not, unless do you know?
I think it's a item, so.
Equipment and services paid for. So consultants, curriculum, what?
When you make a purchase, it's an item line. I think it's the item line. So like, I think when, like correct, if I'm wrong, I don't know who else was in that meeting. But I, I think it's a single, single item line. If you make a purchase for supplies, it's certainly own. It's a fun function and source code. And it can't exceed five thousand dollars according to this policy.
So would that include a consultant? Would that include a curriculum purchase? Would that include?
Well, it wouldn't be monthly. So, you know, with like a consultant, I mean, we're not paying them. Or, or even, you know, a contract teacher, we're not paying them, you know, their salary.
I, I mean, maybe that's a question. I don't know.
The issue is whether you have to get quotes, right?
Yeah, it talks about bids later, because it says you do not need bids for like textbooks, books, tapes, films. So what's the hell that you don't need bids for?
Okay.
Otherwise you're any kind of a bitch.
So the five thousand limit is if you exceed that, you have to get competitive bids.
Okay. That doesn't seem good. Nevermind, I'll, I'll withdraw that. Um, and I will just let you know that the, the language changes for the finance pieces that I was looking to be we approved these already. And then in light of our budget situation now, I, I, I was looking at other policies for different districts in same language that I wanted to add. So under budget implementation, the language add is super the superintendent is highlighted. The superintendent may consult with the business manager when major purchases are considered. And she'll keep the board informed as to problems or concerns as the budget is being implemented. Under purchasing cards, I noticed that Nicole had added this language in their policy and I thought it was prudent. And then says the board treasurer, this is six, four, two, four. The board treasurer receives detailed receipts of purchasing card transactions as part of the company reconciliation process to review the purchases or valid school purchases, et cetera. Those just seem like pretty non-nonsense things to add. And as I mentioned this earlier, this is Carla's has been talking about this too. I think we want to revisit our financial policies and processes as we continue to sort of shape with that, you know, how that evolves throughout this, this time. But for now, I think this would be good basis to.
And the board used to get purchase card details previously, so I'm grossing, this makes sense.
Uh, so there's a motion and a second to approve the second readings and the additional language in the two finance policies just discussed.
Just, just a side note, I do think that the purchase report is going to be good for you know, sort of an accountability, accountability piece for purchases. However, I do think that someone on the board, whether it's the treasurer or not, is maybe, I don't know if it's policy or not, but they have a monthly meeting, something like that with the business manager to kind of go, to go over the budget. Because again, these are the line item purchases. You know, but you're still not getting the big picture. I, I don't know if that's upsetting because, you know, again.
I understand.
I've done a little bit of, or I, I did take a class in school budgeting and it takes a lot of expertise and kind of the knowledge to manage a school budget too. So.
I hear you. I think that's a intention to get some of that education as we go through this process and that will helping us play a good processing place.
So. Yeah. So my only point is that this is a good start. Purchase reports are great, awesome. But I do think that maybe one other thing needs to be included in that, and that would be.
Well, we already approved a policy that calls for a monthly financial report that was so specific. So it's just, we'll start it here into that one. But I, I, I hear your suggestion and I think it's good. Uh, any other discussion? You had, okay.
No, as you say, though, they basically do something like this, and it is helpful to sit down, go through questions, see what's different. With, and, and, and it varies, but and not as imposing, but I do have the time to go and sit down, chat over there. And to new charges, and they will, to make sure that there's nothing that shows out is a problem to have. It, it's a good tool for the recent.
Do you do it because you're the treasurer?
Yes.
There's motion on a second to approve the second readings of the policies as well as additional language, um, to financial policies. Not hearing any more discussions, so if all in favor, please vote aye or aye. Any opposed? Motion passing. And then we are moving on to the four thousand series first reading.
Um, so I didn't see questions from, I think that I just kind of chatted some thoughts down, since it's a first reading, if I was just not anybody, any, any other questions or thoughts regarding this policy, so that take on maybe those that I'm used to.
Your question.
Well, actually, um, so Alison, at the bottom of that page, there were two policies. And I did note that here I wasn't able to find these to review. And your response here is that they were approved for licensed staff and Steve was letting us know the policies are not for staff support. In, just so you know, in board docs, it lists December twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Is the date? See that? I can, because when I looked in there, I saw December twenty, twenty twenty. So I have a second in the line. Spot. Because I did go and look them up after I saw you go. So I go into active policy manual, professional staff. I go to thirty, forty-two. I see. Adapted December twenty, twenty twenty.
You must have to, do you have different access? I thought twenty-two.
This is a late act of one.
So, okay, we don't have to work this specific problem out right now, but what I do would like to have happen, and I see you've been asking for this various ways, but I think we need to create like an index of the policies that we have done with the Ola. And approved. And then the policy, any policies that are second reading status or something, you know, or for like whatever that looks like. And then the policies, I know all of our policies guess made an effect. We haven't terminated the policy.
We don't know what's being superseded.
Yeah, so, and, and my only concern is that we cannot wrap this up by the time we have board members coming on. And part of onboarding is presenting them with policies. And also this is just, we, we're considered, we're consistently having this confusion about uh, which policies are which in the, in board docs. I think it would be good to just to have that like itemized and clear. Uh, and right now there's also policies in there that, um, are for philosophy, but we're leaving the numbers. And I think, and I told Steve that I think we should be revisiting those because those are because that's part of sort of the Ola process. So I think that that would be really helpful to have created. Is that something that you or someone can do?
I can ask Steve. I mean, if you go to.
I asked him, because you told me to ask him.
If you go to active policy manual, those are all. His recommendation was to wait at the end. And then there's the one policy the board approves, like vacates and all of the old policies. So that was his recommendation is to wait. And then to that, I can circle that.
Well, I don't think he's, I asked him and I, I, he wasn't, it didn't sound like it was something. And maybe he was looking into it. I don't know. We need to follow up with him. But just for our purposes of keeping it straight, what we've done.
I wonder if it's access to, I mean, because if you're the public you don't have your access, you're not seeing all those other little folders and all those one-two apps. It's like really obvious what the new policies are. So part of that is you guys can see behind scenes of everything, but I'll circle back with.
Where I get anything is because we have this kind of real time, a, a, I mean, a school district that's working in real time. So we have some old policies that have not yet been replaced. I can't determine when I go to the policy link on our webpage, right? There, it says link to policies and I go to the Google Drive. But they haven't all been superseded yet.
Right.
So I don't know which ones have and which ones haven't. So I can look there, then I can look at board docs and see the new policies. So if I'm a member of the public, I have two sources. And short of a massive investigation, I can't tell where to find the policy. Because there's no like one source that says, these are new policies, they supersede these, and these are the remaining old policies that are still. That's an idea, right?
Yeah.
Um, but otherwise it's really.
And, and what Steve was talking about doing was putting them in the set file, but I'm talking about creating like an index on track of what we've done, what we're doing. Okay, so that motion. Yeah. There wasn't, yeah, sorry.
I think you're getting ready.
A little bit. Okay.
I'll make the most.
So.
For the discussion. On favor, please vote aye. Okay, first readings are approved. All right, we are moving on to six C.
Oh. So they came to our attention now, the last thing we put in. And our healthcare provider, United Healthcare, is not doing that for the free over here. So we had one staff member shout about that concern. So there was a discussion around whether or not we want to proactively reach out to all staff to determine if others have encountered this situation and was a conversation that came to take down Carla and between those recommendations to get up a whole board, waiting on next steps.
You know, I
No, do you? Okay.
So, so we had the vaccine clinic and we're assuming that most likely there was a period of time where it was all covered. And then you did hit a point in the pandemic frame where that's not the case anymore. So they build insurance and our district's insurance is not in network. On the flyer for the clinic, it did indicate, please check to make sure that, but we can also understand why staff would assume in some ways that if we're holding it in it, that our insurance is going to be in that. So that was the discussion.
Were there communications that said that, that this was uh, in network or did we ever have any belief that it would be in network? Did they do it previously? It was in network?
It's in it previously and like nobody got charged.
Great. Like, I mean, I think there just wasn't, the insurance has now started billing, I believe, for vaccines. For some insurance, that's my assumption.
Who's our insurer then?
No, it's also there.
So anyone had United Healthcare should have been charged.
You know, we, I don't know about this. One staff member that we know received a bill for like two hundred and seventy dollars. And then reached out to Allison, Tracy, and they got Kim, uh, Kim asked involved and all spoke with her. So everyone's on the same page that, yes, it was noticed on this clinic, on the flyer, you know, check with your insurance for coverage, but there's also was this expectation that could have been reasonable, uh, that if the district is offering a vaccine clinic to a staff you know, that that would be part of their coverage.
I think that it's only one person. How many staff members participated, do we know?
I could get that information.
You should have that information, right?
So, so.
I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't.
But how many?
We might do. So the, the, the question to me was, how do you, how do we work with this one staff member? And if you want to make them whole, you might be setting a precedent because then you're going to find out those are coming in and that's not three hu- two hundred dollars, that's twenty thousand dollars. You know, I don't, I don't know what that is. And so I wasn't comfortable at making, giving direction on what to do without the work way again.
I'm sorry, I can't believe that we can hear about this from every single person.
Right. So, so one thought is, do we just send out a staff communication that says, hey, if you were at this clinic, can you check and see if you were billed or, you know, where you let us know if you received a bill? Like, I don't know. You know, that's, this is why I I wasn't.
I would like to propose that, and, and, and then, I know there's no motion, but it leaves it like this to consider that. We're actually, so. Someone write them an Instagram, written over and say, hey, what's up? You know?
Vaccine.
Yeah, and just say, look, you know, uh, if we get, uh, off the nation, I don't know. I would like to pursue a way that we could ethically go back and over and say, come on. And tell them to cover, uh, the cost because they should have made that clear. Uh, and, you know, I have sympathy. I, I mean, we can't pay everyone, but.
They do say on the bottom of the flyer, as, as a lawyer, I mean, if you are unsure if your insurance will cover the vaccines, please call your insurance provider directly to confirm. So I assume that will be there in clout back. But also.
My clapback is, I would not be unsure about coverage because my employer is offering the clinic. Why would they offer a clinic in house that's not covered by by our insurance? Why would an employer do that? Right? I, I wouldn't even think to call my.
I guess I'm seeking some clarity though. This was a district-wide offer, correct? It was not specific to, like, so for instance, MPS actually offers like employee-specific clinics. This was not an employee-specific.
Uh, no, it was, yeah, it was to families and staff.
Okay. And so, I mean, I agree, it would have been nice had we had a provider who was in network. That's certainly something we need to put forward and ensure that that happens with. It, it was not an employee-specific offer though. I, I guess I would want clarification from Novir about how they did or did not communicate to their contracted agencies that things had changed around billing.
So now Steve, I like that I changed.
Yeah, it's an interesting thing. You're right. It's just an open clinic. Anyone could have come. So we're basically giving Novir free space.
Based money.
Offered, insurance funded.
Yeah, well, our short health agency actually also offers inoculation, right? You just had to go in the trust thing.
I had thought of that, that it was open to anyone.
And it's what, and it's free.
So do you have a recommendation on what you think we should do?
I'd like to follow very much initially and see if we should give you the numbers. That'd be good.
Follow that. Can? Okay.
I I mean, I should have, because if if there was no one else, then we know, and granted, they could have got polio, uh hepatitis, uh and all all the different, I can't believe that, hon- honestly, pardon me one is why we were doing all this anyways, but I mean, not just COVID flu, but you know, we did it, they came in, the uh no one else is complaining, I think that was the comedy and the possibility that I'm ever coming back, it would be more than interested paying the.
One person. Yeah. Yeah. Actually, this is why you have the law. You have a model astegram.
All right.
I.
I, all my astegrams are unique, and and wrapped with love and affection of each individual section. All right.
Okay, okay, so that's. Well, it sounds like we're gonna first try to work it out with Novir, we're also going to again, try to get a. Okay. Um, future agenda topics, meeting dates, does anybody have any future agenda topics?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh. Well, okay.
Precise, yeah.
Yes, I I do, well, okay, so the first one I wanna bring up is the possibility of bringing back uh the finance committee. Uh, that would be run by the treasurer and with a with another person, so it'd be kind of, I know we have committed the whole, but I think it would be a good idea, kind of going back to what I was saying, where maybe the treasurer meets with the business manager once a month, it could also be through a finance committee. So I think we could separate that from the whole, that's the first thing I would like to discuss.
Could we bake that into a discussion on um budget, like at our next cow, we're gonna be looking at some other budget suggestions, thinking about engagement and board process, could it could it be part of that discussion?
Sure, it's listed. As like, you know.
Well, because if it could look different ways, if it's a meeting with the treasurer, I think we should six of it.
Okay. Uh, second one, uh, there's that state statute in uh I can't remember the numbers, ten fifteen, uh. I'm not thinking of it, anyway, there's a state statute talking about administrative contracts. Uh, oh, one eighteen point two four, maybe, anyway. Um, and it says that administrator contracts can be no more than two years. Um, I think we should talk about a policy for our district, uh because teacher contracts are one year. Uh, I also think that potentially that should be discussed, uh how long administrator contracts are.
So. I'm just trying to think about when that would make sense to put on an agenda, because our administrative contracts currently are rolling, so you try to think about.
Well, it's a.
Well, and so there's a, there's a time where it's gonna make sense to talk about administrative contracts.
Well, typically, I think we approved administrator contracts or historically done in January, February, correct?
We did teachers first.
April or May, usually.
Usually the teachers first.
Why do I remember reviewing contracts?
No, yeah.
What?
Historically.
But, sorry?
Historically, you're right, I know that, um, prior to the prior administration, from what I understood, administrator contracts were reviewed in January. We usually, we did teachers first.
Okay, uh, but we should discuss the.
Okay, I'll, let me work with you on when we can bring that and how, is that okay? I I think there is a date for similar to teachers, like notice of non renewal.
Yeah, but for art for the.
I'm just saying, like, that might have been related to the previous pattern, because right, because that would have been in January, like you would have had to do that in January.
Right, administrator non renewal lives end of January, right?
Correct.
I think you're right.
Oh, so that might be related to the previous pattern.
Teacher non renewal or staff non renewal, it's a book there, statute, so. But that does, that's notice of non renewal, that doesn't
Well, there.
That doesn't necessarily mean we've addressed admin contracts before teacher contracts in terms of.
Right, yeah, right.
I just don't have enough memory.
I would say that that's like, that's a discussion where I would want to engage administrators on too, because I could see it being a benefit, I could see it being in this moment, maybe not.
Well, no, that's what.
But I mean, like, I know that the reason it came on was because it was to be like an attractive, you know, benefit, right? So I think it's worth a a pretty good discussion.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I I think it should be a agenda topic.
Okay. Um, okay. I'm gonna skip the board meeting too, because I need for two time.
Um, there was one question online.
Or.
Um.
Related to future agenda topics or meeting dates?
Unfortunately, it was related to item six A, and that was my fault for not bringing it up earlier, because I was trying to research the answer before it got.
Oh, that's, okay, is it, um, did you find the answer?
Um, no, can I, can I share the the question and then?
There, I mean, this is really not Robert's rules.
Okay.
But we're an informal small board, so just let's just tell me what it is.
Okay. Um, Sarah Kramer, uh, who is a staff member, she could not find um the policies that were mentioned in six A, um specifically policy three one six one and three four three one in board docs, and I'm assuming it's because they're still, they were still under review, and that's why they were not available, um, in the executive summary, the links do not work for the public.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, um, can we share those policies with her after this?
Okay.
And then we'll work on the other logistical issues.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Don't enter to the motion.
Motion to convene into closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee or with which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons specifically to discuss administrator evaluations of employee leaves, employee retirement, and superintendent's contract and related matters.
Second, second. Uh, all in favor, please vote, oh, no, 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 sorry, I'm so sorry, there's motion and a second. Um. Colonel Ben T. Cox?
Aye.
Ben Lynn?
Aye.
Andrew Franklin?
Aye.
Aye.
And the other goes aye.
Uh, we'll now move into closed session. And just to clarify for the public, we reconvene, it will simply be a journey, so there's still the.
Exactly, Nate.
Thank you.